Everybody who are at the long awaited Strategic Plan Meeting. First of all, I ask you, if you please check your phones and make sure they're on mute or shut off or something along the way. Mark, if you have two phones, make sure they're both the same way, Mark, okay?
One wasn't shut off.
I must say that Jeff Buckaloo got the best parking space today of anybody here. He walked from his house on the beach to here and I was pleased to see him come out of the beach. When he came out of the water, I was kind of concerned that he was somebody I didn't know. But he walked here from his beach and it was very nice. Well, it's good that we're all here this morning. It's good that we're all here in person, even though we're a football field away, but it's a good feeling having us all here at the same time. Today is all about what? Strategic plan is about what? And what we will do is we'll be filling in the when, how, and everything at a later time. But we have to go through the what to see what's there. Mark has the thing broken down for this morning. We'll go through what's in the book. Then he has a whole lot of stuff that members of the council here have talked about that wanted reviewed and everything. And then go through them after lunch. This is not a session for lectures, speeches. It's a working session. I'd appreciate everybody being as brief as they can, right to the point of what they can. And let's try to get as much done as we can in a reasonable period of time. With that, Mark, first of all, we're glad you're here, Mark. I thought I seen your car going the other way over the bridge this morning, so I was kind of concerned you were going the wrong direction.
Thank you.
It's all yours, sir.
For the record, that was not me. Can you turn that down a little bit for me? Thank you. Well, good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all the time that you put into this community and leading. It's interesting, tomorrow marks my eight-month anniversary. And I do count, because I count my blessings and I'm more than grateful to be here, serving as your town manager. And I have such great appreciation for how much work you all put in for the council meetings as well as behind the scenes with your community. So, as a staff, and I can speak for us, we couldn't be prouder to work for you and alongside you along the way. I really want to say thank you to the team around the table. They also have been counting that I've been here eight months. I think that we've made some great progress together. I'm getting to know them as much as they're getting to know me. And I think that's, it's a great relationship and a very professional environment to date. And I just really appreciate, appreciate all of you. I could spend minutes, lots of minutes, talking about each one of you and how you lead the community and how you've helped each other in your respective staffs. We have a great town staff. I've been working with them, getting to know them, understanding the culture of the organization, understanding the dynamic, you know, the why. Why do we do it that way? Do we need to keep doing it that way? And I've been asking a lot of questions and trying to invoke a lot of thought. We have several folks in interim positions. I truly believe that building the right team is the most important thing I can do here. But I also really believe in building the team slowly. And so I am going to keep waiting until I find the right person in the right position at the right time, instead of just putting someone there. It's allowed some folks, especially Chris Yates and Jeff Buckaloo, to serve as interims of two departments that are very important. I think Jeff has such appreciation, even more so, and admiration now with the loss of Scott, serving as the director, interim director of Infrastructure Services. And I know Chris Yates, I absolutely know Chris Yates has an appreciation. I was walking past this morning looking for a bottle of water and I heard Chris telling someone I didn't even know who was behind me. He said, "Gosh, I sure appreciate Charles now." So, great job to the team, great job to everybody. I also want to say a lot of thank you to the various, and I think it's important right now to say a couple of thank yous to kick off. Our various board commission and committee members, your appointments, you know, the planning commission, the DRB, the task forces, all of those folks really make the machine run. And I think that there's such great opportunity here. And often, we don't say a lot about the board commission and committee members. There's almost as many as them as there are staff members. And so that goes a long way as we advance. And it's going to play in a lot of this, as we review this today. A couple things, just some housekeeping. Krista, tell us about the microphones real quick.
Absolutely. Being in this meeting on a virtual meeting, you've got to pause here, you've got to mute and unmute yourself. On the front of your microphone is a green button. When you press that green button, you're live, because your red light is on. When you're done, if you could just unmute yourself, or excuse me, mute yourself, then you're off. And you know you're not live anymore, because you don't have red light. All right? Any questions? Simple thank you.
You're amazing, Krista. You made it look easy.
Mark, I have a housekeeping, I have a housekeeping issue.
Yes, sir.
I don't normally complain about temperature. I know you want to keep us awake, but it's pretty cool in here right now.
Okay.
I'll get that taken care of.
Krista has it set, so it drops one degree per hour, but we'll, we'll reset.
Yeah, housekeeping is very comfortable. Okay, Mark, just two administrative stuff before we slide down.
Yes, sir.
Krista, could you take the role?
Uh, I will.
Okay, okay. Next. Krista, are we in compliance with Freedom of Information Act?
We are in compliance.
Krista, are we in compliance with Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, we are, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mark.
Thank you. Yes, we are absolutely in compliance with FOIA. And this is also livestreamed on our Facebook page, on our website. I was just looking at our website, Beaufort County channel. And thank you to Beaufort County for being here today. Hargray Channel 9 and Spectrum Channel 1304. So, lots of ways to see us and hear what we're talking about today. In front of you, Mayor and Council, you have really two agendas. One, the public agenda, the Strategic Plan Workshop Agenda. But on page two is an outline. I just want to go over it real quick, so you know what we have in store today. So, skipping down to item two, I'm going to overview the strategic planning process, right? Let's just talk strategic planning for a minute in terms of why it's important and how successful we can be with a great process in place, before we dive into the whats. The next is exactly that, discussion of proposed strategic initiatives. So, our focus areas. Those are, those are the priority order or the priority set of overarching goals. We'll review an action agenda, and I'll show you that in a second. There's also time today for me to hear from you, as much as you hear from me. I really want to hear from you and allow and provide that opportunity for your discussion amongst yourselves. You have provided comments to me. Council members have provided some comments, both in person and in a meeting and over the phone and in emails. And so I'll review some high level of that today. I'll also review some additional items that have come up since this book was printed and put in front of you. And as, and we know you've had this book for a while, and I know you've taken a look at it. And so today, I'm going to go through some things faster than I typically would, simply knowing you've had that material and that content for some time. I'm trying to accomplish a lot today. I'm very respectful of the process that you went through shortly before my arrival. So nine months ago, you sat with a NOVAC group and you went over the comprehensive plan and your strategic priorities and you worked on various, various items. That's attempted to be captured in this binder. And so next, the binder. And just maybe for the folks listening and participating, and I know, Council, you know this, on purpose, intentionally, on your desk is the short summary guide, the guidebook of our plan. This is the very first thing somebody handed me as I arrived. And I know that you keep this close. And please know, we've used this as the template, as the baseline, as the guide for this strategic plan. We just didn't make the colors the same and the same font. The content of it is driving the strategic plan. So as you go through your binder, it's almost self-explanatory. The front section really talks about strategic planning, and then it starts diving into our strategic initiatives. All of those various elements that we've extracted out of the comprehensive plan, out of our plan, and really baked into the strategic plan. A portion of the book is the high-level goals, the high-level strategies, and another portion of the book are those tactics. Today's not so much about tactics. Today's about the priorities, the what-to-dos. It's about the goals, the priorities, and the strategies to accomplish those. In your binder, it's really important, and if you haven't already, I encourage you to take a look at the back appendices. And it's important that we have these appendices. One of them is the Capital Improvement Program. I think that's a very important element of any strategic plan, of any initiative. It's improving our built environment and the public realm. That CIP program will always remain as an appendice of the strategic plan as I work on it with you. You also have in here the work session report from the NOVAC group. And again, I haven't forgot about that. This isn't, this isn't to replace that work you've done. This is really to let you know that we heard you, we're listening, and to ask, are we missing anything? So, that report is in this book. What's also in the book are those elements of the comprehensive plan, the now, near, next elements, and that priority order or that priority set. We've taken that and attempted to put that, place that into the strategic plan. So that spreadsheet's in the back. And that has been our guiding document, for the most part, as we get there. I also want to show you something, and I've mentioned it, but we haven't highlighted it. On the left side, I'm not asking you to read all of that, because I can't even read all that from this close. But that's what we're calling our Strategic Action Plan. That's really our work program. And if you take a look at it, what's going to really help me along the way, I assure you, I'm not going to be reading this on a daily or a weekly or a monthly. I'm going straight there. And that airtable has been put together by Josh, and I appreciate it. It's something I've used in the past and have found some success in managing this. Mr. Lennox actually suggested one of the items of the strategic plan should be the strategic plan, and how do we implement it? Well, how do I manage it? How do I communicate it to you? How do I make sure, how do we make sure we're on track? Right there. And so if you look at the far-left column, it's the Strategic Action Item. So those are the different strategies that we will talk about and hopefully agree to today. Josh, if you go from left to right. So, is that as far left? Okay. Department of Primary Responsibility, who the project manager is, what fiscal year we're starting. There are some things in here that we all can't start, fiscal year '22. Obviously, we're going to have to start some things in fiscal year '23, fiscal year '24. And I think that's an important conversation we have, if not today, soon, perhaps maybe even as we're rounding the year and into New Year for budget discussions. What we need to do, though, is be realistic about this work plan. If everything's a priority, right? If we're working on everything, five seconds at a time, nothing's going to get done. So, the hard job is going to be working on this in a way that we can get some things done. And that column remains very important to me. I remember it was either, I forget who it was, that said, "How are we going to get all this done in one year?" And I said, "Well, strategic plans in companies are not one-year documents." Think of the largest company in the world, think of the largest company in the country, think of the largest, or think of just a coffee shop if they have a business plan. Nowhere are they trying to do business one year at a time. And so, I don't, I don't try to practice that either. And so, this plan is important. It's not to mean that we don't have a sense of urgency. It's not to mean that we aren't going to focus to move the, move the needle and accomplish great goals on your behalf and as directed by you, but we can't do it all at once. That's very important to us. Next column, committee assignment. And so, what I find very helpful, and what staff really has helped me understand, is the ebb and flow, the process from town council committees, four members of council, three committees. We know what they are. But what we've done is we've listed to our best ability what committee we believe these strategies are worked on alongside you in prior to a council consideration. And so what that column will do, it will help us identify what committee chair we will work with to place those items on the agenda. It also, as a committee chair, lets you know what your pipeline agendas look like over the next several years. I think that's, I think that's healthy both ways. It's a little less chasing down agenda topics, and we can be more purposeful as we're planning our work. The next column, and Josh, that's the last column, correct? So, project manager, department, committee, fiscal year start date. The next are the project notes. And to me, those project notes are so important. That's how I will manage this strategic plan. That's how I will know how to go work with different and various department heads to talk about the work program, right? Not just putting out fires, but let's talk about the ordinance, let's talk about the capital project, whatever that policy directive is. I, well, I already have started to talk about the expectation. And upon adoption of this plan, this will be live on the website. You will have read access to it, and so a good link. It will be live on the website. And the last, you know, last day of the month, no later than the first day of the month, as long as it doesn't go past midnight, that expectation is that the department head assures that that is well-updated. So whatever progress was made every month, whether it's been on a committee agenda, going to a committee agenda, we had a public meeting, we had an open house, whatever that is, whatever progress is made on that specific item, that will be updated. So you, as council, our boards, commission committees, members of the public, various and different department heads, definitely me, can get on this and check to see how we're doing. So I think this is a very helpful tool for us. It's an online document. It's a, it's in the cloud somewhere. We can, I can access it from anywhere. Josh is the master administrator of this, and I, and I think this, this as a work product has come so far since we first started this exercise. So, we know that comp plans are guiding document. And Josh, the mouse, oh, my clicker, there we go, not a mouse, the clicker. And that our comp plan was adopted in 2020, and it includes various goals, strategies, and tactics, some general, some not so general. The now, near, next priority order, we try to really understand and place in this document. And today, we intend to provide an overview of those goals. And today's about confirming the goals, not really coming up with all the goals. They're already here, they're in the plan. One thing I remind myself, and one thing I talked a lot about with department heads, I'm very clear with them, and they are very enthusiastic about it, that you set the policy. I want to know where you need me to be. I need to know where you want us to be going with various items. I'll ask you more questions first, then I'll walk in a room and give you my hard, firm recommendation, unless something is really wrong and something's on fire, of course. But the process to work is working with you individually, definitely collectively, and definitely through committees, to set that policy. And once you set that policy, my job, within reason, is to implement. Right? So, as you set policy and I implement, I will talk to you along the way about allocating resources, priorities, issues, questions I have. And I just think that this plan will help me have the confidence to move forward on those elements. I'm going to overview them, actually. So that's the outline right here today, overview of strategic plan, the discussion of the initiatives. We'll have a working lunch. We'll talk about, we'll dive into the airtable a little bit more if you want to. And then reviewing potential additional initiatives. We received some emails from recommendations from Greater Island Council, Planning Commission. There's some new topics that we need to just simply ask ourselves, is it time, is it ready to put in the strategic plan? And then a conversation between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock, and try to get you out of here at 2:00. My goal right now is to get through the front part of this book, as I call it, the strategies by 11:30. So, I'm going to go a little fast. And what I'd ask you to do is if there are various strategies you want to know a lot more about, or a little more about, let me know. We'll flag them, and we'll talk about them over lunch before 2:00 o'clock. So, I think from an ebb and flow, is that a fair, or do you want, do you want a different, different way? Good? Thumbs up? Okay. So, we know what strategic planning is, right? It's our process to define our vision, direction, and making corresponding decisions on how our resources will be allocated. I don't need to dive too deep into that. But how will the plan help us? The obvious. You know, our plan guides the strategic plan. The strategic plan needs to direct the operating budget, and the operating budget influences the strategic plan. So, it's not that I want to sit here and adopt everything and then come to budget and not have the funds, or the means, or the resources. That's where the real work planning and operational planning come into place, because I don't want to fail. I don't want to set ourselves up to accomplish things, but not have the funding or the resources to accomplish. And that annual operating budget empowers the strategic management. And that doesn't just mean me, that means all of us. What's not in here are routine operations, budgeted expenditures, day-to-day, those types of things. The one question, and we put it in here, and this is important, that this needs to be an annual process. This can't just be once in a while. It can't just be today, and we'll see maybe when we come back. We really need to focus on this strategy. That way, I stay up close and personal with you on where we need to be going policy-wise, and then I have the confidence to continue to implement. Very important. Little bit about this, and I think this is more so, and I know members of council, I'm not sitting here trying to teach this, but I think it's important that our community know that we are vision and mission-driven, that we seek to establish clearly defined goals, we seek to establish and identify strategies to accomplish those goals. Those tactics, the specific actions that need to occur, we'll define. And if it's a policy matter, I'm definitely working with you. If it's an operational matter, I'm definitely working with the folks around this room. And so to achieve success. So, if we're vision and mission-based, this is what I have to use as our mission and vision. The Town of Hilton Head Island Mission Statement. The mission is to promote the health and vitality of the community we serve through ethical and inclusive programs, policies, and actions. That's our current mission statement. And so in the employee survey this year, as we conducted it a couple months or a few months ago, staff was warm to that. They didn't sit there and say, "Oh, I love this. This really helps me identify with the company. It really helps me understand what our real mission is." And so my suggestion is that for today and for this strategic plan, that it's be placed in there, but add this as an element, you know, in our minds and on our to-do list, to perhaps revisit this in the future. I think that it's time to think about a mission statement. And we might say, "Hey, we love this." You know, in hindsight, it makes perfect sense, it's great, but it is time. And then our Hilton Head Island Vision Statement, as identified in our plan, which is the 2020 to 2040 vision. Reinventing sustainability, again, to focus on revitalization and modernization, and to build an inclusive and diverse community, straight out of the comprehensive plan. And please stop me along the way to ask questions. And so, again, straight out of the comp plan.
Oh, I always have questions. So, so I've gone through this, and I'm listening to what you're saying. And so if it's a good time for questions, I've written down a couple. I realize that there are varying degrees of depth that some of the goals have in here. Just curious, as we work through it, for, to ask you for your guidance and staff's guidance, in terms of where we do start to reach that ledge where it's too many goals, right? If you could keep us on track, so that we don't overwhelm what this first year's plan really looks at, I'd look to you for that guidance and staff.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Some of them are little, so the number isn't necessarily as important as the depth of each one of them and how.
Thank you.
And then, secondly, which will be probably a recurring theme, when we look and read the words throughout our plan, throughout the strategies, through the strategic plans that are developed, I think it's important that we have a definition of specific language that becomes controversial. And I certainly encourage us to do that, so that we're all on the same page with regard to that. Which leads me to, I realize we're not talking tactics at this moment, but to tactics and the transparency of the, what specific actions we will be doing. Those are my couple to get us started.
Okay. Definitions, in what regard? Definitions for our vision and mission?
No, they're--
Or definitions throughout the entire strategic plan?
Well, certainly a common definition in terms of what we mean when we say certain things. And what is the tactic that is being employed to accomplish those, implementing those words? For instance, diverse and inclusive, and a definition. And so that we all are on the same page, so that what's being done in order to implement, implement any one of these strategies--
Okay.
--that we know exactly what that means and what's being done behind the scenes, and that we're all on the same page with regard to that. That is what I mean. One of the interesting things that I found, that I find, whoops, there is it, is that in our plan, we have a page, I wish I could see. Anyway, it's on the second page. We have our plan key definitions, and how those were devised is fine, but I think we may need to add to that list and be clear. And I think that council has an important leadership role to make sure that we are saying what we mean, and what we mean is being carried out. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you. And so what I'm hearing you say is further define the unknowns, right? Further define some of these common themes, especially as we relate to our vision and mission statement and throughout our document. The comprehensive plan has certain definitions, but perhaps it's lacking. So Josh is taking notes. I see Sean taking notes, too, over there. And between the two of them, I won't forget anything you say.
Okay. I may say it another twice or three times as we go along, but thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. I, thank you. Any other comments or conversation about that with council?
Good morning. Just to move on from Tammy's comments, I think a simple way to approach this is if we ask ourselves, do we want a glossary of terms? And if we do, then why don't we individually send to you words that we think are important, but may have different definitions? So we don't have to spend a lot of time on it today.
Okay. Thank you. Please send them. Please send them. I'll come up with our own. Having a glossary of terms for the strategic plan is, seems simple enough. All right. Well, speaking of definitions, today, a goal, an aspiration of a desired, or a desired outcome. And again, this is out of our plan, and so I'm being respectful of that document. I didn't work on it. I'm learning it. It's, it's a great document. It, it isn't as specific as a comprehensive plan could be to tell us what to do for our future. And so over time, I think that we have to take that plan and respectfully bake it in, pack it into the strategic plan. And I think that that's a great-- And I think that that's a great guide for me to do that. I think both documents, one's a higher level, of course, one's a lot more specific and strategic, but it's also more actionable. And so between the two, I think we need to focus on the both of those. A strategy, of course, a plan of action, and a tactic, a tool or action item. So key community themes, straight out of our plan, I won't read them all because I am trying to get through the, the true strategies, but those are in the comprehensive plan. They're in your binder and they're in our plan, and they're in, they're up here so that we, in this presentation after today, parts of it, not all of it, will be on our website. So, out of the comprehensive plan, adopt and pursue our ideals of excellence, protect and preserve our natural environment, manage evolving growth while maintaining our unique island, unique aesthetic, I should say. Provide exceptional quality of life offerings in arts, culture, and recreation, best-in-class facilities. And again, right, that's, that's what it, our plan is saying to achieve our vision and mission. Develop creative revenue sources to fund the delivery of capital services, maintenance, operations, and projects. Recognize, respect, and promote multi-dimensional diversity on the island. Promote efficient and secure public services to meet current and future needs. I said I wasn't going to read all these, but I think I better. Plan for and mitigate the effects of climate change, environmental or health concerns, and natural disasters. View the region as a partner, not a competitor, hear that a lot, it's good that it's in there. Foster a healthy, self-sustaining community that encourages economic, cultural, and demographic diversity. And so, there we have it, straight out of our plan, those are those items to achieve our vision and mission. And so, how did we create these core values into strategic action plan goals? Well, here they are. Those are straight out of the comp plan as well. Pursuit of excellence. And so, these, if asked, walking around the building or the 30 seconds in an elevator, although we don't have many elevators on our island, if somebody asks what our company goals are, as we communicate our company goals through our website, through any materials, social media, as well as digital, and marketing materials, these are our company, these are the organization goals. Pursuit of excellence, require and sustain excellence of place, people, planning, and process. Goal one. Goal two, create a resilient and sustainable environment through planning and policy. Three. Third goal, create an island-appropriate economy that has sufficient depth and breadth to attract and support a diverse resident, visitor, and business population. Next goal, foster a multi-dimensional equitable and diverse community. Next goal, facilitate true connectivity in island physical, social, and cultural environments. Regional focus, evaluate how regional expansion will impact immediate and future social, economic, and political planning and policy. Right-sized infrastructure, align the community's physical, environmental, and social values with capital improvements and infrastructure planning. And then finally, but not last, and definitely not least, parks and rec. Implement the Parks and Rec master plan. So great job to everybody involved in that master plan, it's a great guiding document. And so, there you have it. That, that right there should be the focus of this team, this, this senior staff team as they, as they work, as we implement.
Mark, I have a comment on that if I might.
Yes, sir.
This group doesn't need this, but I think those in the public that may be watching this need to know that these goals and so forth were developed by our citizens, not being imposed by the government. We had, thanks to the leadership of our staff, we had many, many, many public meetings where there was input from various sectors of the community that evolved and developed these goals and objectives.
Thank you. That's an excellent point, and thank you for making that. It's so clear to me how many opportunities for public input there are, but also, and probably just as important, is how many folks actually get engaged and involved and, and spend their time providing that input. So, excellent point, and thank you.
Mark, if I can just jump in for a second, because I'd like to pick up on what Glenn said, that is, that is absolutely true, and back to what you said with regard to how this community came together and worked long hours and many sessions to put together their thoughts about how the Town of Hilton Head Island should proceed. And then you mentioned something just prior to that about how it, it has some vagueness through it. And I think it may go back to Bill's good suggestion of having a glossary, but one of the things that I've brought up in the past, and, and I still find maybe an area that I think we should reduce the vagueness, or at least come up with a glossary term for it of understanding, is best-in-class. I always find that as a second-tier word, and so I'd like to have a best, I know we have an understanding in our current, our plan on the definition page, but I would really like to emphasize to our community, if that's listening, from my perspective, I'm looking to be the best in the world. I'm not settling for any class designation. I see Hilton Head Island as being the best there is throughout this world we live on. And then, secondly, just going back, it's the right-sized infrastructure that always bothers me, because I don't, I can't get my head wrapped around what right-sized infrastructure is, because we haven't defined where, where our capacity limits are, and, or never mind where they are, where we want them to be. And so that's just two areas that, that I think we need to kind of think about in the future. And I know there's some elements going through the strategic plan that address that.
Yes, ma'am.
Those years out seem to be a little bit far as, as I see that as a priority now, but just want to make sure that I'm heard. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments, questions, commentary? All right. So a little bit about the book, and a little bit about how it's, it's broken up, or, or I would say separated. So, we're about to dive into the strategic initiatives, right? So if, if we talk about our community themes out of our plan, how those are converted into, you know, strategic action plan goals, but then what's also important is how we convert those, how we convert these goals right here, these overarching goals, into strategic initiatives.
Point of clarification, Mark, a strategic initiative is the same thing as a strategy.
Yes.
So.
As a strategy.
As we go through this document, they, they are used interchangeably.
Yes. Thank you. And Josh is going to kick me if I mess that up over here. He already, I already told him that. Don't let me mess up that strategy versus tactic. It's something that Josh and I really talked about, to be honest, and upfront about, because if council is really focused on the goal and really focused on the strategy, and I'm really focused on defining the appropriate policy with you through the committee, through council, with public input, so on and so forth, this works, right? This, the circle of life of that initiative really, really plays out.
Yeah. If, if we have the right goals, chances are, they won't change.
Correct.
What'll change will be the strategies and tactics that you have up there, based upon what works and why, and what doesn't, and why not.
Yes, sir.
So our, our focus really should be at, at the goal level, maybe some of the strategies, but that's about as far down as we go.
I agree. And, and that is a very healthy place for a town manager and a town council to live. What, what's really important, though, is that, that, that's not saying that I'm simply bringing you the policy. So example, short-term rental ordinance. It doesn't just mean I'm going to come up with that policy and work with staff and work with community and, and, and keep you out of the weeds and bring you that policy. It's very important that we craft those expectations, those priorities, talk about those challenges together, so that you are actually, something that comes in front of you is something that you've been a part of addressing. And I think that's important. And so, with, it's, it's the important part and also the challenging but easy part if we define the process. So.
Mark.
Yes, sir.
Just for the public listening, then, so, we, we have significant, if not sole, responsibility at the policy level. From the public consumption standpoint, in terms of strategies, is, is that in our wheelhouse or are you in that wheelhouse with us?
I think we're all in the wheelhouse. The comprehensive plan's in the wheelhouse, the community is.
And that's my understanding, but I think that.
It's a good point.
Public needs to know that.
Right. And, and what you're about to see, the strategies, the, the real strategies, those come out of the, our plan. Those also came across my desk out of a committee meeting, right? So I don't know that on a particular page, and I'm going to stick on short-term rentals for a second because it's an easy one to talk about, that's not on page, you know, 92 of our plan. All right? So that came out of a need, it came out of a community assessment, it came out of committee, it came, it came from council. Some of these on this screen today come from me. Some of these come today as some recommendations from department heads through me, and as I agreed to them, they're on the board. So, they're coming from different angles at different places, and I think that's a healthy way to look at this. But at all times, our plan is that guide. So we're just not pulling something out of thin air from that, from that true overall goal standpoint. And so today, as we really look at the strategies, it's, it's broken up three ways, policy, project, operational. So, policy is obvious, right? Strategic, strategic by virtue of their legal origin and require formal action on the part of town council to accomplish. For example, amendments to the Town of Hilton Head Island ordinances, formal resolutions, creation of new programs, such as the American Rescue Plan funds and the subsequent programs that were created, that's just, needs to be through you. And then policies or revisions to existing ones. It's pretty clear. Things that need a vote. Those, those items that need a vote, resolutions, ordinances, simple votes, new programs, I'm just not picking on pieces of new programs and implementing them. Projects, so those initiatives that are defined and are strategic because of the substantial commitment to resources required to accomplish them. Priority investment construction projects, so your vote matters, that there's really defining the project through the strategic plan, but really at time of budget. So, and a budget's a policy, of course. There we go. Uh, there we go. Sorry, having a couple. There we go. Next, operational, strategic initiatives that consist of tasks or other activities executed by town staff in order to provide enhanced services. So operational, one example, improve the development review program. Different than the fire department strategic plan, right? Fire department strategic plan came to you and through you, and even though that's strategic at an operational level, you're involved. But improving the development review program, establishing different metrics, reviewing the plan, working with the home builders, working with staff to refine the program, making sure that folks are, our, our resources are in place and the process is great, that's operational. And so those are things that I've added to that, and so you'll see some operational enhancements today that are on my plate. And so I think that they're still strategic, even though they're not a policy matter, they're still strategic, and I want you to know that I'm working on things even outside of your collective goals for your policies. And so I think that's a, a good part. A little bit about the, the tactic sheets that we won't really get into today, but what's really important is that in, in a portion of this, this booklet here, we've listed out the initiative, the starting fiscal, the, the initiative type, whether it's policy, project, or operational, the focus area in those, in those terms, and who the project manager is. Regardless of who the project manager is, I will work with the department head on it. But department heads can't be project managers on every item, and, and so I think that's important. And to quote our favorite CIP program manager, right? Scope, schedule, budget, regardless, that's just not a capital improvement program mindset, that's, that's any project manager mindset on this document. Who the Department of Primary Responsibility is, and then a description of the initiative. That's your cue, Josh. Josh said I could slap him if he was sleeping, but.
Blowing up a picture.
And I think it's important to just show how all of that translates to the air table, because I know you can't see that there. And Josh, just run through that real quick and pick one, just, let's pick Parking Study, since that's coming forward.
Sure. Something a little bit familiar. So as you can see with this one, it is more kind of highlighted at the outset of this talk, but in the air table is going to be basically a summary-style format that's going to include all the ingredients that we have, taking that risk of where's the core value that we're trying to accomplish with this strategy? What is the fiscal year start date that you're going to see action on this item? So if you see something that has a fiscal 2021, that means we start with this, prior to July 1st.
How's it going? You think it's going good? Okay, thanks, brother.
2022, those discussions that have occurred sometime after July 1st are still going to be current fiscal year. And if you see a 2023, that means it's going to be a special, like, it'll start sometime at July 1st, basically coming down. So I know those dates change based on fiscal years accounting.
This will all get worked out.
It's got that safety thing.
See, she's just can't help herself.
And again, if you see the Department of Primary Responsibility.
How's it going, you think?
Who the project manager is, and what's interesting about this, if every person was identified as a project manager, and all the department heads have.
Good morning. I didn't say good morning.
So they'll be able to go to the end, they'll be able to update.
How's it going? You think it's going good?
Directly, without having to worry about anybody else.
Thank you.
And then we'll be taking this, and then you'll have a person directly on the side of the public to be able to follow, as Mark indicated, on a monthly basis about what is going on with these items. What is the last thing that's occurred, things that are all arising and occurring?
I grabbed a coffee. Did you click on that one and go straight across the right side of the screen?
That's it.
Uh, good. Perfect. All right.
So again, for example, Implement Parking Study, that's the one I'm the project manager on, so as we go forward, as we have monthly updates on this, we'll be posting them here within this table.
Okay, good. Can you go back? Let me, let me, let me help. Go all the way to the left, please, sorry. All right, so there we go. Next column is what?
This is the core value that we are assigning for this one.
All right. Pursuit of excellence. Next, this is a policy initiative?
That's correct.
Next, it's in the department, our department. Next, Josh is the project manager. Next.
Fiscal year start.
Fiscal year start. Next.
And this is the town council committee that we'll be working with on this particular item. So again, in this case, it'll be Mr. Ames that we'll be working with, and I believe we had, should have a meeting set for next week.
Yeah.
So, if I understand it, this should indicate that, yes, scheduled presentation on recommending implementation steps for discussion on 10/28. So again, you can see that information, it's going to be updated on a monthly basis about what has happened or what's coming up. That way, we can clearly communicate to the public on each one of these items, what the status is, even if that means that there has been no action on this item. That's still us communicating with the public that there hasn't been anything that's occurred with this particular item, and it may be because it's not a this fiscal year item, it is a next fiscal year item. But again, that still communicates that information and therefore expectations to the public.
Wonderful. So, that's just really how it works, and it's kind of right there at our fingertips, and over time, this is a living document, and so we'll refine it, and to Mr. Lennox's point, those strategies over time will change. We're going to accomplish some things, close them out, celebrate them, really celebrate and appreciate the hard work that goes into them, and get on to the next one. And I think that if we meet on strategic plan enough, and I don't know what that enough is, that's, that's up to you, I have some suggestions, then those strategies are always being added. What, what it's also going to help us do is, if something comes up mid-year, and it's like, oh, hey, Mark, let's, I don't know, let's, let's build a community center, and let's put a partnership in place, and let's, let's do all these great things. Well, my, my answer should be, and with all due respect, I think that's a great topic to talk about at strategic plan. And so, that's a good time for town council to understand. Doesn't mean I'm not going to spend a little bit of time on the due diligence coming here, it's not just a, you know, a, a, put it in a pile and we'll visit it in 11 months. I think these opportunities for us moving forward are times for us to talk about new items. It's also a time for us to close out and look back and, and get excited about those good things that are in place. So, and with that.
Mark, just one question. Using the parking plan as an example, when that is being expressed at a tactical level, if I'm a member of the community and I don't like where it's going, where can I be heard or where can my comments be memorialized if in fact you want them? Can they be inserted at the note level?
No. That, that note, that level isn't for that. That note level is for the project manager to do their work. Their, their voice needs to be heard via email. Their, their voice needs to be heard via email directly to their, their elected officials, to the town manager, to others. But it's also at time of public comment through different and various meetings. And if we're doing this right, it's not just public, it's just not the public comment at first and second reading. It's, it's the public open houses. It's the interaction.
Right.
I think Mr. Lennox.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, to use your example of an idea that comes up mid-year, let's build a community center. Let's do a public-private partnership and build a community center. I think your answer should be which one of the goals does that support? That's a strategy. That's not a goal. That's a strategy. And which one of our goals is that in support of? Once you determine that, then I think you have to evaluate where in the hierarchy of existing strategies does this fall?
Yes, sir.
Does it fall toward the bottom? If so, the likelihood is that it won't be allocated resources. If it's a wonderful strategy and you think or we think that it should be at the top of the list, the likelihood is it'll get resources allocated. But that's the formal process that you've set forth by doing this.
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you. In the ideal world and the, and a great process in place and the right people around the table, I think that, that's, that's the, that's the wonderful part of this process.
Right. And, and just picking up on that and using the same theme, I, I don't see it that dissimilar to when we brought, when a resident came to me and asked, well, several of us actually, and asked that a pavilion be built at Islanders Park. And, and that was brought forth and it was able to be assimilated into the capital projects and made sense for us to move on it immediately. But I think in answer to Bill's question, I think he knew the answer. Those things always come to us first. We get those phone calls, we get those emails and messages and it's our responsibility and duty to make sure that their voices are heard, either in committee or directly to town manager and that changes as appropriate can be made. One of the things that I would hope for with this system is that any lack of transparency that may have happened in the past is reduced, not only reduced, is eliminated completely. And I'm wondering in terms of how the follow-through and checkup with those, that can kind of be played. I'm not asking for an answer right now, but I am saying that that issue must be addressed. And I think that this, this plan that you have with what's, you know, the program manager's notes or the director's notes in terms of what's happening is clear and transparent and honest.
Understand. One thing I do have a question on is are you asking me to follow up on something here? Because there, is there a topic or an issue that I should go back and research? Or do you want to get through these?
No, sir, I want to get through these, but yes, you, I think, I think we're all aware that there have been some transparency issues and some confusion in terms of roles and responsibilities.
Okay.
And, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not looking right now to, to talk about it, but I'm happy to.
Okay.
If you'd like.
This is your day.
I'll give it some time.
I think we should dive through the strategies. Yeah, so, well, here's what I'm going to do right now. So I'm going to dive into these strategies. I'm going to go through them quick. Please stop me and slow down and also say, yes, I want to talk more about that later. We can, of course, I'm going to overview everything right now. Know that.
Mr. Lando.
Yes, sir.
Just one question before you move on. You mentioned that as far as how often we review is up to us, but you have some ideas.
Yes, sir.
You want to cover that later as far as the ideas? Perfect.
Yes, next steps and future and how all this. Mike.
Let me take that, Alex. Mark, I'm even talking and we, the tentative plan is to reconvene this group in March and September. So we would meet twice a year formally and more if Mark or you guys think we need it. But the next meeting would be March and a formal meeting would be September. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. And the more we meet and the more we refine, because I assure you, I already know, I already see a couple of things, in about six months, we're going to say, why isn't that in there? Or why is that in there? And gosh, how did we not think of that back then? The more we meet on this document, the better it will become. In year three, we should be hitting our stride and a part, a part of the norm, a part of the culture and very strategic as a council, very strategic as a senior staff and firing on all cylinders operationally. So that's the goal. Know that as I get through these strategies, I'm also going to cover some of your feedback to me. I've received wonderful emails. I've received such great advice, just even in terms of reorganizing a piece of the document. Mr. Lennox, thank you for helping me purge out what a goal on this looks like. So members of the community need to know, town council has put in a lot of time with me and by themselves and recommendations on this and I appreciate it. So I'm going to go over your high-level feedback. I'm not reading every single line of every single, single thing that was sent to me. So if I'm missing anything, please don't be offended and please tell me if you think I'm missing anything. And then also there are new items, as I've mentioned, not new, additional. And to Mr. Lennox's point, we've got to take a look at those, understand what goal would, they would accomplish. If they are a strategy, what, what priority order? How important are they? And should we add them to the mix today? And today's about the future. Today is not about going back to work tomorrow morning and hopping on this. I really encourage us to think about those goals for our future and dive into the strategies. So I'm going to stand up because I can see the screen a little better back here. So forgive me if I'm moving around. And so just to recap a little bit, as we look, these strategies are really bucketed into these goals. So we're going to address them in this, in this order. By no means is this a priority order. It's simply the order. So Pursuit of Excellence, require and sustain excellence of place, people, planning and process. As we look in this, require and sustain excellence of place, people, planning and process. So therein lies that goal. The strategies that are in place, all of these on the screen should not be surprised to anybody, definitely to, to members of council. So you can see that some haven't started, some were well underway of. And I think today, again, to remind us, is about what are we doing and do you agree? And if you do, know that we're going to work on these items together at a later time through public meetings, through committee opportunities and so on, so forth. So here we go. Adopt American Rescue Plan Funding Appropriation. Well on its way. Signed the MOU with Community Foundation. I emailed that to you recently. It, it was emailed a little later than I wanted it to, but I do think it's a, it's a really great MOU. It's concrete. Mr. Troyer is going to serve on the committee at the Community Foundation. And so your voice has been heard, that is in place. There's several other programs though. Town Hall Security, Town Hall Technology, Housing Infrastructure at Patterson Park, Infrastructure, Home Repair Program, the Safe and Dry Program, as well as removal of dilapidated uninhabited structures. All of that work is well underway. Assess Alternative Revenue Sources. That came up at budget. Implement Parking Master Plan.
Mr. Lando, I want to go back to something you said earlier when you were preempting. As you go through these very quickly.
Yes.
Flag you if there's something we want to talk in more detail about later, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I felt it. Did you flag me yet?
Well, I'll let you finish, but I want to make sure we're clear on that. Thank you.
Implement Parking Master Plan. Adopt Short-Term Rental Regs. Adopt Affiliated Agency Town Funding Process. Adopt a 2020 Census Redistricting Plan. Adopt a Beach Master Plan. A SWOT Analysis on Our Financial Policies. Adopt the Real Estate Transfer Fee Extension and Expansion. Beach Shuttle Service Enhancements. Establish Island Brand Development Strategy. And so those are the policy items under Excellence. Anything to flag for later on that screen.
Mark.
Yes, sir.
I have trouble fitting various programs and projects into categories. And I'm not being critical here, but for example, why is Adopt the American Rescue Plan under Pursuit of Excellence rather than, for example, building an inclusive community? Is that just an arbitrary decision that you make as, as being our town manager?
Yes, sir. It's, it's an art, not a science. I don't know how to, arguably, because the topic will come up and it'll be obvious. Environment.
Sure.
It's, it's not as robust as others. You could take so many of these items and put them in environment. So, and, and some of it's driven by that, our plan. Some, some of it, when you really look at it and you dive into those terms, because to be, you know, transparent about it, I had some of these in different areas, but as staff started to review it and the folks that really worked on comp plan, on our plan, said, no, that's not that bucket. That's not that priority goal. It's over here and look why. A lot, some of this was really defined, but to your point, American Rescue Plan, Excellence. And again, your feedback.
Could have fallen a number of different places.
It could, sir.
I'm willing, I'm willing to accept your decision though. Thank you.
Okay. And if you feel strongly about it, let's move it because that's what today's about.
So Mark, I do have a few here on that Excellence Policy. The Alternate Revenue Sources.
Yes.
The Redistricting and the Transfer Fee.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if I can add to that list, Beach Shuttle Service Enhancements and Establish Island Brand Development Strategy would be two that I'd like.
Okay. As, as we eat lunch and leading up to two, and if we don't get to them all today, we'll find some more time.
Mark, to, to Glenn's point, it's possible and it is frequently done to have one strategy be in support of multiple goals. So he could have that same strategy listed under another goal. Only do it once, but in support of two goals.
Yes, sir. That's when you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And just one comment, Mark. I'd like to make sure what Tammy and Alex mentioned is top of the list for lunch rather than new stuff coming in, because I don't want to discuss something and not answer the questions. I'd rather go through their questions rather than bring new stuff in.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Josh, do you have all those on a nice, clean? Okay, good. All right. Thank you for your feedback. Operational. Respond to the pandemic. Improve our permitting program. And so these are things we're working on as a staff. Conduct and respond to employee satisfaction survey. Improve administrative support process for boards, commission committees. Arguably an SOP, standard operating on how to recruit, how to vet, how to appoint, how to onboard and how to train. So full, full gamut. Research Trends and Implement Best-in-Class Municipal Services Delivery. That, that came out of our plan, that came out of your strategic plan discussion back in February or so. Acquire Fire Rescue Center for Public Service Excellence Reaccreditation. Implement Fire Rescue Strategic Plan. Implement Cultural Affairs Strategic Plan. That, since it's been rescinded, needs to shift to policy. So, nope. And again, I didn't change this since that. Enhance Communications Plan with Strong Social Media Emphasis. Create a Culture of High Organizational Performance. Implement our C Click Fix mobile app and website application. Develop an HR Strategic Plan. And develop a Technology and Innovation Strategic Plan. So those, those last two, that's Lisa Stoffer, our amazing Human Resources Director, and John Tuttle, who's also amazing as our IT Director. They will have strategic plans in their office, so they know what, what business they're in. We, we all will know. Anything on this you want to dive into a little bit? There was one question about C Click Fix. I can answer it quickly. These are things that I will put together. If there's policy in anything, I will definitely be bringing it to town council as a policy initiative.
So I, I have, and it's basically just questions because we haven't had an opportunity as a group to, to, I think, talk about some of these and so I welcome this opportunity. Research Trends and Implement Best-in-Class Municipal Service Delivery. Definitely want the very best service delivery and customer experience for the residents of the island and our visitors and businesses. I'm just curious a little, to get a little bit more information about that.
Okay. I'll, I'll tell you how I think about that.
Yeah.
And I did it last night. I was up late, reading a magazine, a public management magazine. International City Manager Association just put out their, their publication on who won awards. And I'm sitting there thinking, we could have won something here. Why didn't we apply? But what's filled in that book, and I'll forward it to you, ideas on everything we're working about. It's so small towns, medium towns, large towns, even people. People are winning awards in, in this business. And so we researched that. I also researched Urban Land Institute, those national and global awards for housing, those national and global awards for public space, American Planning Association, municipal association awards. So that I'm always scouring and I know these folks as well. What we also do, and again, I'm going to keep focused, maybe we'll, maybe we can adopt short-term rental ordinance by the end of today, I'll talk about it so much. Just kidding, sir. We won't try to do that today. But when we started to dive into the short-term rental discussions, before we had an opinion, my direction, and Chris was already on top of it, which makes him a great partner, was already researching different places in the country. Not to say we need to be like them. We're not Miami, we're not New Orleans, we're not, we're not Key West, we're not Charleston. We know that. But what have they done? Because if there's ordinances and policies in place, what have they learned? And as we start narrowing down what some others have done, we make a phone call. Hey, what did you learn? What are you doing? What's working, what's not? And so to me, that's researching best-in-class. But that is at every layer of the organization. It is at, from facilities management, we just hired a, a young man who came straight from Palmetto Bluff. He knows what best-in-class looks like. He, he's going to implement those. And so I think it's a bar more than a research project. So hopefully that helps. Anything else on here? We can always revisit that. Oh, I jumped through that. Environmental Sustainability. Create a Resilient and Sustainable Environment Through Planning and Policy. And again, this is light and we've challenged each other internally. I've challenged it simply because this doesn't feel good. This doesn't feel as good as that in a sense of we're excellent. But we say that our environment is number one. We're environment-based and we respect nature and we're here to replicate it, so to speak. But it's light. Implement a Beach Resiliency and Renourishment Plan. And, and we talked a lot about that at, at last budget adoption. Identify Opportunities to Improve Solid Waste and Recycling Objectives. In Coordination with the County. Work with Public Service Districts on Long-Term Capital Projects. And then Operational. Establish a National Leadership Credibility and Environmental Sustainability and Resource Protection. Acquire Audubon International Sustainable Community Recertification. So as, as we go through this and new items come up or you see some items in other, under other goals, other strategies under those goal sections, we can move some. It's just really using that, our plan as a guide, this is what we're receiving. Yes, sir.
I said at our retreat that this astounded me, that an island that publicizes its brand as being environmentally conscious comes up with just three policy statements and two operational statements. And I just want to emphasize what Mark just said. This does not feel good for our community. Thank you.
I wanted to make a comment here also, Mark. I know embedded in the plan, there's a, there's talk about sustainability in regards to climate change, right? And that definitely is under this environmental section, right? But I think it's important that, you know, as you went through our goals earlier, you know, each one of them kind of has a purpose statement, right? But to me, the environmental policy or that goal kind of threads itself through all of them. And it needs to be sort of front of mind for us as we go through all of them, right? So I guess I'm not as concerned about it being so, so empty, so to speak, okay? But, but at the same point, maybe it needs to be noted along the way that the environment is first for us.
Okay. So. Understand. Capturing that. Josh, that's a great point.
I'm not positive that I fully understand the thrust because I thought you were headed in the direction of what could. because I thought you were headed in the direction of what goes into a resiliency plan. It sustains the economy. It sustains social and cultural networks and so on and so forth. But then you said that you're not as concerned that they're only it's light on policy here. What?
I guess where I was going with that Councilman Ames is I'm not as anxious about it being light. I'm more anxious about it not be in front of mind in the other categories. Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Excellent points.
And not all strategies are created equal. You may have to allocate enormous resources to one of those strategies versus very few resources to others. So simply because there is only three policy strategies and two operational strategies does not clearly define the commitment of resources to any one of those. I suggest that the commitment to resources to those far exceeds the commitment to resources on others.
Okay, thank you. Those two alone, you know, really beach resilience, renourishment plan. We know what that means. It's let's look at our entire coastline as a as a resiliency, as a as a risk. What's the threat? Looking at that is a major change in our policy and how we look at things. We've simply renourished beaches where you can walk on them. But we haven't really looked at the shoreline erosion or the true beach renourishment opportunities. I know Jeff's got point on that and he and I've had a lot of conversation on it, to your point. And then the solid waste and recycling will be, if we are focused, will be a major undertaking.
Mark?
Yes.
Just one last comment. Just to make my point. I think if if this island is truly interested and committed to the environment, then some of our LMO regulations are in conflict with that. So I think that you you have to dive into some of the decisions that we've made and promulgated and ask the question, are we truly preserving and protecting our environment?
Okay, good point.
David, who do you think should be diving into those LMO changes that affect our environment?
I think the town manager has some ideas on that. And I think it will be staff driven, in my opinion. Staff driven to the point that its staff can present to a committee, probably public planning, alternatives and ideas to enhance our LMO to protect the environment.
My personal opinion, because my personal opinion is that David's groups should evolve early on to make sure we're covering the right group of LMOs and make sure we're going in the right direction. Is that okay with you, David?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Lennox just made a good comment. Do you want me to relay it? The comment was, what about the LMO committee? That's their purpose.
Okay, I think both, right? Because if you have a vested interest in the policymaker, I think your direction, to me, needs to be to go work on something. And then we work through that LMO committee to scrub, to refine, to create. And at some point, it's going to come back to you. I think that that's the initiative there. And that's I'll I'll cover that because there are some bigger picture things we need to do before we keep amending the LMO.
I think David's heading in a very good direction. I'm going to ask him through you if he would explain what's behind the question. My sense of what's behind the question is that, given all the undeveloped land remaining on the island. And if you look at the buy right uses and you optimize density as much as possible, is that where we really want to go? Or do we want to take some of this out of harm's way and do something different?
Right, okay. I don't know the answer to that. I I think we're going to get get to that.
Okay. May I just jump in? I just wanted to go back to, and this may just be something for later. But as I recall, sitting through these group meetings, as our our plan is being put together, I believe it was Anne Siren who was hosting a group on environmental sustainability and brought in some experts from, I think, Seapines, who has mentions here recycling and and such. And I recall that session being so incredibly intriguing and so worthwhile to explore further. So I just wanted to make a note that I thought she had done, A, good work, but B, there's in my mind, is something there that we really should follow through on and develop perhaps. In relationship to the LMO changes, I know that oftentimes those come from ideas that Terry brings to the committee based on comments through various committees and commissions, et cetera, but also through council members. And I think that we should remain an integral part of that process. So anyway, those are my comments.
And just so the council knows, there will be somebody from the county coming in in January or February to go over their long term recycling plan and what it means for Hilton Head, Hilton Head Island and the community together.
Okay. Help me understand, please, your first point. You said Anne Siren did a great job. Folks came in from an environmentally set or environmental sustainability standpoint.
Yeah.
Are you? Are we making a side note to add something new to this mix?
I'm not sure if we're adding anything to the mix. I just recall that conversation and the and the presentation that was made and I found it amazing, intriguing, and something that, you know, I was surprised. May in my mind should be looked at again or thought through or at least revisited.
Sure.
That's all.
And thumbs up from Chris means he's going to look into it. He's going to brief me on what happened and if there's any and if there's any actionable items. So I'm getting I'm getting through this. Anything to flag for later? Okay. Revitalize economy is next. Let's take a quick break. And so, and I know, and I'm just as folks are listening or watching Facebook, whether it's live or later. Know that we're monitoring some of the comments. And so I appreciate some feedback. I know Carolyn's looking at it and thank you, Carolyn and and others. One question was, hey, when can we get a copy, right? When can we see all this? And I mentioned earlier, I'm going to put the presentation online. The presentation is draft and we'll have a watermark draft across it. It's simply these goals and objectives and strategies. Know that we're going to make some changes based upon today and we're going to adjust some some areas. As I'm getting through this and hearing your comments, I think there's some opportunity. And then if we add anything or subtract anything, those adjustments. So the document that we'll put online online will be this presentation draft. And then I have some next steps that I'll go over with you all before we depart today, just so you know where we're going from here. So with that being said, diving right back in. Strategic initiative, right? So here's here's the next goal. Revitalize the economy. Create an island appropriate economy that has sufficient depth and breadth to attract and support a diverse resident, visitor and business population. Very clear goal. And so from a policy standpoint, adopt the model business license ordinance. Happy to say we at least get one point. We already did that. Develop town owned property management, asset management and utilization plan. If I've heard that once, I've heard it 1,000 times, right? Such a such a such a big job, right? Not to dive too much in the details, but but it will be on a map. The map will be interactive. It will be clear on how we acquired it. It'll be clear on when we acquired it. It will be interactive. It will be clear on other preservation covenants in place or funding restrictions that force the end user. We also need to manage our assets. July, okay. Yes, Sean? We and and sir, I didn't say which January. So that's my, yes, sir. Yeah, by easy by January, easy. So operational, you annually approve the the DMO, the destination, marketing organization, marketing plan. And in the contract and in some enhancements and in a good partnership discussions, there's some expectations and we'll measure those. That is an operational item. That is that is for us to implement, but by no means am I going to operate in a in a vacuum in a in my own silo. That will be through the appropriate committee, finance. It will be in front of you. The marketing plan as it comes forward this year, I've given some some clear direction and Jen's our point on this. You see the marketing plan, you review the marketing plan and you adopt the marketing plan. So I think there's some good good things in our future. But that's an operational item, but I will bring that forward with you because that is a obvious mandatory, automatic per our DMO, per our ATAC. Sir.
And we've notified them and Josh is preparing a letter for me that we want to see the marketing plan in its draft form, not after it's all printed and put together as a book.
Thank you. Thank you. But implementing it's operational.
So that that's the part that was questioned for me. I didn't quite understand. If I've if I've missed something in the past, doesn't our DMO partner do that?
They bring that to you.
They bring it to us and and we've implemented it in the past?
You you. And in a real partnership, we should be working with them and they should be working with us and for us as they implement the plan. But by no means is it just a simple adoption and it's it's on their lap. This is a real partnership agreement and they're arguably our marketing company.
I like that.
Establish an economic development strategy. Again, if there's some policy that comes out of that, that will become a new policy objective, a new strategy under policy. But I think we've got to, as an operational standpoint, establish that strategy. If there are strategies in there that we're recommending incentives or land issues, we're going to bring that forward. But right now, it's living here in operational. Acquire cultural district designation. Anything, anything pulling off the list for later?
Yes.
Just one question. In terms of the Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation, where does discussion about relationship with them come in?
Well, it's here. I think we need to refine that, right? From a real strategy, I talked to John O'Toole last night. I meet with him on Friday with Sean. We we are always working together. But some of it's reactive. I want to figure out how to, you know, play offense on this, not so much just defense and leaving John to do his job, great job for the whole region, but also think that he's focused on us on a daily. Right? So that's that's where that comes in.
Okay. In this goal, Mark, it seems to me what we're talking about. A part of it that we ought to be talking about and should be on the list is growth management. I don't know if that is just implicit in this, but I think it should be stated explicitly.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, I'd like to. I'm I'm flagging here.
All right. You throw in the.
Yeah, well, not for now, but at later time during lunch. The, you know, the town owned property management, asset management and utilization plan.
Yes, sir.
We'll take a little deeper dive on that.
All right. Anything else going once, going twice, three times? Nope. Were you going to say something?
No, I know it'll come up in later conversations, but the culture, the acquire cultural districts designation. And I realize that kind of weaves into the management plan, et cetera. So I just will be listening to hear more.
Okay. Governor Nikki Haley put some cultural districts in place in her term and cultural district designation simply helps you with future grants and helps you with notoriety. So that's what that is.
Right, right. No, I understand that piece of it. Yeah.
All right, inclusive community. Foster a multi dimensional, equitable and diverse community. Inclusive policy. Implement the Gullah Geechee Task Force workforce, work plan, sorry. Implement the Gullah Geechee Task Force. Establish a public institutional partnership with USCB to support arts and cultural organizations. Adopt annual HUD and CDBG entitlement program. Develop landmark protection program. Conduct community engagement survey. Inclusive for operational. Assist with implementing the Mitchellville Master Plan. That could mean a lot of things. We just had a great update from Ahmad on that issue. And so again, intentionally and specifically, we're saying that we're assisting the partner who's leasing the property under operating agreement as much as we can with with your direction. Incorporate public art and culture projects in the new existing, new and existing parks. Implement asphalt art program. Anything to pull off that list for discussion deeper before between now and 2 o'clock?
I don't know if it's between now and 2 o'clock and it's part of a strategic plan already pulled, but the implement asphalt art program was something that we had discussed previously and I was unclear about what that means to the.
All right. Mr. Gruber's writing that down and I'll ask Jen to give a quick overview of that as we dive deeper.
Mark.
Yes.
I'm not necessarily anything on the board that I want to pull out to talk about, but I do want to make this this comment. The mayor and I have talked about kind of civic education and that sort of thing, right? And I'm understanding that the populations in our school district, particularly right here on Hilton Head, okay, there's been an influx in the Latino Hispanic population. Okay, I think 45% is the number that we're getting, okay? The Hispanic community needs more engagement with our government, right? That's a great idea that the mayor came up with as far as civic education, right? I think we need to be mindful of that moving forward. We don't necessarily have a policy in place at the moment or anything operational at the moment. But I think it's it's worthy us discussing moving forward.
Okay. Did you grab that under a new item for consideration that we can scrub and refine? Thanks. Thank you, sir.
Mark, just a comment on that. We've been talking to Terry Heron and we've made it very clear to him, he's working with the Ascian community and that there are jobs available in our facilities department and there are jobs in the town that Hispanics as well as anybody else should apply for. Mark and me have meeting with a group of them the first week in January to try to get them interested out of town hall. So they don't think it's a government project rather than just a personal project.
And I'm embedding that in the organization. You know, we had a translator at a very important meeting. I think that helped. We've converted where's not here, but IT, Carolyn, Angie, there's Angie. We've converted our website through Google and some other means to read Hispanic, to to be Spanish and Hispanic accessibility. And then we've also started to convert all of our forms, our fillable forms in Hispanic. But we're just getting started and I hear you. Connected. Facilitate true connectivity in island physical, social and cultural environments. So this is a big one, right? So are we connected? But connected just doesn't mean people. It means physical, social and culture. So policy. Assist with St. James Baptist Church. We know that's well underway. We're waiting to hear back from the federal government. Adopt an e-bike and e-scooter usage regulations. We've been working on that through Public Planning Committee for a long time. Adopt a mid island redevelopment strategy and park master plan. We know what that is. Develop a Hilton Head Island Growth Framework and illustrative master plan. Conduct a SWOT analysis of the land management ordinance. Big to do's. Really big, really important. And there are certain things that need to happen in successive order. We can't just do it all at once and hope for the best. I think the the target here is on your mark, get set, go, not on your mark, go. And so we have to be very careful in how we rethink this. Update town website. Amazing. What did we just win? Angie, you have to tell. Sorry.
You caught me with a mouthful.
Well.
We won two awards and I'm going to defer to John Tuttle to tell us exactly what they were. I found out about this late last night, but we were selected for two awards for our brand new website. John?
Yes, we were honored to receive two awards from AGLO. It's the National Association of Government Web Masters in two different categories. This is the National Association of Government Web Masters in two different categories. One in population 50,000 or less, Best Design Website, and one also Custom In-House Design Website with a very small team that we have. Very honored and excited to receive both.
One thing I inherited as I got here, everybody was fighting about the website. Everybody. I've never been a part of a new website process where people were getting along because if that was the case, I, I don't think anyone would be reviewing it. Renee, who is our head, I would call her the Executive Vice President in charge of our website, but it's more than just a bulletin board. The functionality of, of our website is tremendous and we didn't outsource it like some folks do. We built it in-house and we can move it around in-house and, and change some things. And so congrats to Renee. And I've always said, if, as you're building a website, there's so many competing interests to go on a website and not everything can be on the first page. And so tremendous job to Renee, tremendous job to everyone here. I inherited this and I do love it. And I've got a lot of compliments about the website.
Mark, and Renee, Krista and John have done a great job in updating a lot of the technology in-house and they should get recognized for that too.
Krista loves the website. Yeah. Yeah. And the functionality of it's great. It lets Krista do her job. It's not just pretty pictures and graphics, so.
Mark-
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Oh.
All right, maybe a comment, but a comment, it's a, I guess a question. Connected community without a transportation acknowledgement seems to me. I know that the regional has a line item with multimodal transportation. Seems to me we have an on-island transportation challenge, so I'm just raising that-
Okay.
As something that we might want to consider.
Are you suggesting we consider it here or are you considering, suggesting we consider it up here in the goal? Is, you know, not just assuming that physical means transportation?
Well, I, I, I'm suggesting that not to have it be a policy item is lacking.
Understood. Okay.
And this is what I was talking about before, how it's interwoven. So back on 27 and Revitalize Economy, there's a policy developed, Town-Owned Property Management, Asset Management and Utilization Plan. Is that the same or am I just connecting them? On page 33, under this connected community, to develop Hilton Head Island Growth Framework and Illustrative Master Plan. Is, is that the same? Or are those different?
They, they overlap, but they are different. And so what Josh is doing is pulling them out so we can talk about them. And which one specifically? The growth one, of course. What, what, I don't know, I don't have my pages in front of me.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
The asset managed? No. I want to hear from Tammy.
Yeah, no, page 27 and page 33. I'm just curious about how they overlap.
Page 27 and 33, Josh, flag those and pull them out and we'll talk about it. Thank you. Oh, anything else on here we're pulling out? St. James e-bikes, mid-island, growth framework? Let's pull growth framework out. I think I heard that. That's a very important one. We can talk about it. The last two of the five on policy, these, these two live together. We've got to do the top one before the bottom one. Every time you change a land management ordinance, you fix one thing and break three things. So we have to take a bigger picture look and a couple steps back to go forward, in my opinion. Connected operational, update website, SWOT analysis of our fiber connectivity cellular usage capabilities and establish sustainable environmental practices, a social media campaign on that topic. Anything else than what I've highlighted to pull out?
I know it's not necessarily representative of it not being a priority, but to establish a sustainable environmental practice, social media campaign to start in 2023, we should have already started that. That's all.
Okay. Regional, evaluate how regional expansion will impact immediate and future social, economic and political planning and policy. So how regional expansion will impact immediate and future social, economic and political planning and policy. So all policy here. Assess revisions of the Beaufort County Impact Fee. Assess creation of a regional housing trust fund. Update the LATZ study, the Low Country Area Transportation Study that really comes through the LATZ Committee as being managed by, by our Low Country Council of Governments as part of our MPO, right? Lots of letters, but it all fits in. And that's an important, very important, long-range transportation plan for us. The most important thing we'll do because this sets up federal, state monies. It also drives our own confidence as we, as we work with others to prioritize. Very important. This is as much an impact to our island, the LATZ transportation plan, as, as anything. So the intelligent signal systems that we keep talking about, the, the net-net, the end-to-end analysis of William Hilton Parkway. All of that should be in that LATZ study because again, if we're just looking at the island and not looking at it regionally, it's just as bad as looking at, it was just, it's just as counterproductive, I should say, than looking at one intersection at a time. So. Establish recurring regional joint meetings between Hilton Head Island and Beaufort County Council and evaluate access between Hilton Head Island and the greater region through viable multimodal transportation. So Hilton Head and the greater region through viable multimodal transportation. Anything off the, the list to talk about at lunch? And we're getting closer to lunch, but we'll make it.
So again, I'm just, it's just a comment and it should be part of the conversation. And I think probably what I brought up when we were talking about 278 recently is, this is at 223, the greater region, Hilton Head Island and the greater region through viable multimodal transportation. We started the conversation three years ago on 278 Corridor, suggesting that that was an important topic and I just think it's still a very important topic that should be part of our current conversation. Thanks.
I agree. And I'm going to challenge us with, if we work on everything, nothing's getting done.
I know.
And that's the hard, that is the hardest job to, to, to figure out here.
But as we're approving and going through ideas with 278, and some of that, when it was originally brought up in that conversation, was relevant. And I don't know what happened to that conversation.
He has the note. We'll look at it.
And I do understand, and I think I said from the beginning, that, you know, you've got to be able to set forth, you know, how much is attainable. I get that, but-
And we've got that as an explicit item on the right side of infrastructure.
Okay.
So that was coming up in just a second.
Thank you, ma'am.
At lunch, I would just like to hear your thoughts and the mayor's thoughts on, on what we can do in terms of developing rapport, improving rapport between ourselves and our regional colleagues.
All right. Thank you. Last call. Right-size infrastructure, align the community's physical, environmental and social values. So align our physical, environmental and social values with our CIP program. Implement the workforce and affordable housing strategy as adopted by town council. And I know that there's some specific recommendations at that adoption, so I'm, I'm respecting those and being mindful of them. Develop William Hilton Parkway Gateway Corridor Plan. Hats off to Sean. Thank you, Sean. I've been hearing left and right how great of a job you're doing and true servant leadership style. You're doing a fabulous job. Assess Main Street right-of-way acquisition. Another point, we didn't acquire it yet. There's still a lot of work to do. And the real work happens once we acquire that street and plan for the immediate improvements, let alone long range. I, I've been reading the comments on Facebook cheering that they're getting pathways. That's going to take time and it's subject to funding, but it's on our list as a very important item, as, as a policy initiative to acquire. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for your, your, your direction and, and support on that. Adopt community addressing ordinance, self-explanatory. Adopt a traffic calming policy for policy items. Infrastructure projects, assist with cross-island Parkway and toll booth removal and reconfiguration. Before we leave today, I'll just let you know what that schedule looks like, but that's for us to manage and Josh doing a fabulous job coordinating and staying in touch with DOT on that issue. And then a small little one, implement a CIP program. So Jen only has one thing to do. We kind of commented on that. How did Jen get away with only having one item? So anything to pull off the, the board for discussion at lunch?
Mark?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to learn a little bit more about the traffic calming policy thoughts. Thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome.
Yeah, Mark, I'd like, I'd like to touch on the, the affordable housing strategy.
Okay.
I know that's in and out of committee, but just want to dive on that one a little bit.
Yes, sir. Parks and Rec. This is our last one. Lunch is coming at, lunch will arrive in a quarter to 12. Where's Krista? Oh, there you are. Quarter to 12, Krista? It's about 5 to 11. Everybody good? We don't need another break right now? Just keep motoring? Good. Parks and Rec, implement the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Thank you to everybody who worked on that plan. I know there was a lot of public input, Parks and Rec Commission, Jen, Taylor, everybody and, and everybody else, Mayor and Council, of course, you as well. It's a great plan. It serves, it serves our purpose. It, it helps guide our future. I'm always going to recommend that as soon as you adopt a plan, you've got to keep looking at it and, and keep updating it along the way as we learn. Ditto with the strategic plan, ditto with our plan. Establish a Parks and Rec marketing plan. So all these items are operational simply because this plan is adopted. Jen, do you remember when it was adopted-ish? Okay. So, oh, a year ago. Okay, a year ago. Well underway to implement it. We've got several projects that were called out in it live and embedded into our capital improvement program, Crossings and Chaplain being two of them. But a Parks and Rec marketing plan, assist with the Ford Shell Ring development. You already voted on that, that we should be involved. That's why it's operational. Had you not voted on that to tell me and through to staff to work on it, to spend time, money and energy on it, it would still be policy. There's some work to do with that. I've heard from some folks. I've looked at the plan. Beaufort County is building a great project. They're opening up the Ford Shell Ring accessibility to view. There's some risk with that. I don't know if Beaufort County has the budget and if an item would be important to me and really from staff and through me to you, I may come and ask you, there's risk to, to, to settle that risk or minimize that risk. Are you, are you willing to invest a little further in that short, that Ford Shell Ring? So again, again, that would, that would kind of convert to a CIP program and back to a policy item. And then establish Beaufort County and Hilton Head Land Trust, a Northridge Conservation Tract Partnership. That's been on the table in some sort. I have a 23 start again. That, that would, at some point, if there's real policy there and land swapping and money, that would be embedded into the, into the budget. Pursuit of excellence, require and sustain excellent-
Mark-
Oh, wait, what happened here? Oh, there we go. That's the last one. I'm like, somebody said that already. Was there a question? Oh.
Yeah.
It echoes on me and it doesn't sound like it's coming from over here.
The, the Parks and Rec, I mean, I'd like to flag it, but you know, it's all operational, so to speak, right? But because our, you know, one of our calling calls on Hilton Head is our green space, okay? The wonderful job we've done with parks and so on, right? And the fact that we infused that into our comprehensive plan, it, it is a big deal, right? And you know, right now, I know we've got a Parks and Rec Commission, but as far as the policymakers really being involved in that absent saying yes to CIP monies, I'm not quite sure where we connect, right? That's, that's where I'm going. And because it is a high-level goal in, in our, in our comp plan and now in our strategic plan, I just don't, I don't want us to have a disconnect with this particular topic, okay? And just as an example, that we have different organizations to a degree that may manage our parks and recreation, but we may not necessarily have our own policy to drive that, okay? And I think that that's, that's a disconnect that we need to, we need to work on.
Okay. And Josh has that flagged as a new item for talk, for, for discussion. So not, because it's not on here, we'll flag that, but as we bring forward things that we're going to talk about from here, we'll keep, put that aside, but then there's plenty of opportunity, especially getting through this like this, to talk about those, those topics. So if I could, so we've just reviewed the goals and the strategies as we know them in our strategic plan. There shouldn't be anything that's new to you. There's things on there that I know you truly believe need to be up there and we're going to plan for some time there. It's 11. Lunch is coming in 45 minutes, so let's keep motoring for 45 more minutes. And then I think that that's going to give us a lot of time to talk about those, those items. Josh, as a summary, what are we going to talk about? And, and let me show you, Mayor and Council. As we talk about these items, the reason you see this again is for, for our purpose today, what we have up on the screen, here's a, here's a good one, on the American Rescue Plan. American Rescue Plan Funding Appropriation 2021, Mr. Troyer. Here's the project description. And to the best of our ability, we phased this out. We didn't answer the questions. We didn't define the policy as a real tactic, but we phased it out so that we can stay on track and respect that we're going to keep it on track. But we're also being realistic that not everything can happen overnight. So that's, that's the significance of this. So Josh, what are those items that we will revisit?
In order in which they were brought up, so it's assess diverse revenue sources, the 2020 redistricting, the real estate transfer fee, beach shuttle enhancements, island brand strategy development, research trends and implement best-in-class services, implement C-click Fix, the asset management plan, acquire cultural district designation, implement asphalt art program, discussion of the Hilton Head Island Growth Framework, evaluate access between Hilton Head Island and greater regional area. Implement workforce and affordable housing plan, develop William Hilton Parkway Corridor Plan and the traffic calming policy.
How many of them are there?
How long do we have to go over those items?
There are 15.
How long do we have to go over them?
If we add a zero and spend 10 minutes on each one, that's 150 minutes. So my-
Some of us can't say good morning in 10 minutes.
So we're going to get through them and, and I think that we can spend two minutes on some and, you know, 12 minutes on some others. What is important that this is not our first and only time? As, as, as shown on that air table, a lot of these items really have to start and continue and then finally get back to town council as, as real initiatives. I would suggest that over time, and I think we've had some success, on some of these heavy items that just can't get solved by a community meeting, some staff recommendation through and to a committee on an agenda that Krista sends out, I think we should have some workshops on these items. And we've had them. We've had housing workshops. We've had U.S. William Hilton Parkway workshops and Mayor McCann has been gracious in, in allowing me to come together with you all in a workshop setting so we can really scrub some of these topics. I don't suggest we workshop every single one of these things in the book, but there's some obvious conversation. I need the direction. I, I, I'm not good at my job if I'm not clear on what you collectively want me to do and expect me to do. And so I think that, you know, to, to take the pressure off solving everything today, we also have to agree- we also have to agree in some time, perhaps before this document's approved, what's going to also come forward in some real workshops with you as a council, sitting at the table with myself and staff. Is that fair? Sir? Mayor? Okay. Pardon me? Now you only have eight minutes to talk about each item, apparently. So Town Council feedback. And again, I didn't pull everything out. How will the plan be used? I think it's pretty obvious as I explained it, and I made sure I explained it that way. The plan's a living document. It's going to be updated once a year. It's going to be approved by you via resolution. And once it is, we're going to use this air table to track and manage and measure our success. There's a lot of work to do. Your time is important. I'll be as efficient as I can with your time. But you're going to be very involved with implementing it. All the policy items need to start with you and end with you. So. And obviously through the Board's Commissions, Committees, and your Committees. How often will be, there be status reports was another question? The air table monthly? I suggest two, maybe three times a year. Mayor McCann highlighted that. I think there's one big retreat. There's one big, you know, discussion, whether it's one day or two days TBD. But I also think that when we come back to the table to talk about the big picture, every once in a while is very important. Perhaps two, three times a year is probably a good tempo on that. Explore partnerships with island nonprofits was one, so that could be a new item, Josh, and for discussion. Will there be an electronic version? Yes, sir. We will, we actually already have a really good draft and of electronic version, and it's fabulous. By no means is this entire book the strategic plan. I will bind, I will have bound the real strategic plan, the goals, objectives, the strategies, and make that available to the public in a nice bound document. And we'll convert the same to a digital format. And then we will also have access through that air table. So three different ways to understand what we're doing and how we're doing it. Add redistricting to the town website under major initiatives. Okay? And we know how important that is, and that was a very good suggestion, so thank you. Improve Board Committee Commission Admin Support and Recognition. We talked about that. It's embedded in this plan, and Krista will be working on a standard operating procedure for the whole lifecycle. Embed strategic plan implementation in the staff reports. Assure alignment with staff. This is me paraphrasing. Alignment with staff, Board Commission Committees, and Town Council. So the process is so important. How is return of investment measured with town-owned land programs? And I think we get into that with you, and we'll define that, right? DMO marketing plan implementation. More reports to Town Council are needed. Point noted. Establish a recurring meeting with Beaufort County Council in the plan. Implement a workforce affordable housing plan in the plan. Suggest we talk about that in depth. Housing via sustainable community development, right? As we're working on housing, and Patterson Tract being example, it's just not about rooftops. It's about a real, sustainable community. And as a site, as a project, green initiatives, is it, you know, is it water-neutral? Is it solar-powered? Is it sustainable? I think as we think through that initiative, that's what that comment was. Establish a TDR ordinance, and can it assist in the north end of the island zoning? Corridor planning, William Hilton Parkway, Pope, Palmetto Bay, Seepine Circle, Main Street. Corridor plans are important. Once the corridor plan is approved, we know how to plug it into the CIP to implement, so point noted. Can we hold off on incompatible land use until island master plan, district plan, LMO in place? That's a policy decision. There's different ways to look at that. What is, I'm not sure what "hold off" means, but does it mean no more rezonings until we really understand what we're working on? These rezoning applications that have come in, Marshlin Road being one. With all due respect, staff's looking at a zoning map, trying to make sure that it's not spot zoning, taking a look at the surrounding properties and making a decision based upon a map that's been in place for a very long time. There are other ways to get there. And so I think that's what that conversation is. Do we keep doing that? Do we keep looking at the state law to see, is it compatible with the comp plan? Is it compatible with the surrounding properties? And then spot zone every piece of property, changing, you know, light tan to dark brown or green or yellow? So that's what that comment's about. Land acquisition strategy, perhaps we need to look at at-risk properties, reset and sell. Resiliency plan, not just from an environmental standpoint, but from an economic and infrastructure standpoint as well. And then some positive feedback for the plans that are in place. Have an environmental sustainability goal, that the strategies are not robust, we talked about. Why not electric vehicles and some hybrid at Town Hall? Couldn't have timed it better. Mr. Buckleoo, yesterday on his day off that he was supposed to be taking before his daughter's wedding this Saturday, was emailing me about putting, because Diane's making him, actually, thank you Diane, electric vehicle stations in the Town Hall parking lot, charging stations. They're already required on new commercial projects, and so why don't we build Town Hall infrastructure, so to speak, to be the model commercial office location, right? Not just charging station, but environmental materials, lighting, you know, step it up a notch and. We can talk about it. I'm mentioning it so that we can come back and talk about it.
I wish you would, yeah. There's problems with that.
There's a problem with it?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Do you want to pause and talk now?
No, you don't want anybody else to do that. So I'll wait for my turn.
Merge parking master plan, beach master plan, and those are my terms, but interpreting. Don't work on a beach master plan and not think about the parking master plan. Beach population, the crowding on the beach, the beach population must be addressed. Questions on the cultural strategic plan, page three, no, sorry, phase three, page 79. Program good times through programming, implementation of Parks and Rec. So programming's not a recreation programming, but programming as a big picture has come up a couple of times. So that's your comments in some emails, with the exception of the things that you've given me comments on to refine this, and it's a much better plan with the input I received. But these were the, kind of the outliers' main points, so.
I don't want to be in the, let's start.
Pardon me?
I don't want to be in the, let's start with the council's questions from the board, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. How do you want to handle this next, I'll turn it over.
What do you want?
Okay. Well? Who wants to, so out of these comments, do you want me to revisit anything? Okay, I'm going to dive into that right now. All right, let's do it. Tell me which ones first, Josh. John, you want to take this one? Sorry, caught you off guard.
What would we like to talk about?
Yeah. Well, what are you doing? You're conducting, it's right up there. Conducting an education, an evaluation, sorry, my eyes, of potential future revenue sources to ensure that the town continues to deliver quality public services. And so really what this is, and John, I hope, sorry to put you on the spot there, but phase one, spring to summer, a local option sales tax, lost consideration. We've worked with you on that. The mid-island TIFF district, perhaps. I think that if we're going to really invest in a portion of the island, we should at least consider. I'm not saying that that's something that's an absolute, but we've had great success with the TIFF, recent TIFF district that's about to expire. The real estate transfer fee, again, that you'll see that in two places. And then perhaps a municipal improvement district. That's every town manager's dream, but it never happens. So at least let's explore it. It rarely happens.
Can we add one more?
Yes, sir.
I think it's incredibly important for us to work with our state legislators to expand the use of ATAX money to include broader applications, including housing and other forms of infrastructure.
We've got that note. It shows up other places too, but yes, we'll put it in here as well.
Yeah, Mark, would it be inappropriate to spend a little time on LOST? The reason I bring it up is it has great potential, I think, to be a long-term revenue source. And if you ask anyone on the street, what's going on, no one knows anything. The communication on this project has been nil. So the probability of success probably will be nil also. What can we do to try to energize this in terms of communication slash education with the little time we have left?
Let me get the first crack at that, okay? Josh is coordinating with everybody else in the county on the education material. Now Josh is back from his three honeymoon trip this week, so we're back to work. One of the problems seems to be, is that the numbers we're getting from the county, correct me if I'm wrong, keep changing. So you don't want to go out with anything as long as the county numbers keep changing. And I think it's typical county, but for us to put our neck out there and say, this is X, Y, and Z, and they end up being MP and O, you know, is a mistake.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that is correct. There's a number of things that are going on with this. First is, you know, our respect for council's clear and direct instructions to us that you wanted a very informative but content-neutral presentation, basically of all questions and answers that are surrounding this particular issue. And so that's really what our focus has been as staff, is kind of creating that frequently asked questions page where anything that's come into us about any aspect of this program, we've documented along with our responses to that information. To your point, you know, we are subject to receiving a lot of the financial information from the county on this because the sales tax revenue collections are a variable number. They will go up, they will go down based upon a number of factors. And so, you know, the county has to get that information from the state. They then have to apply that to their assessed values for certain classes of property. And again, depending upon the sales of property that occurs, that value could change on an almost daily basis because of real estate transactions that are occurring. So with that understanding, we have been provided several series of financial figures. And so what we're trying to do is take the most up-to-date that are received by us and then turn around and communicate that information out to the public. Knowing that it's, again, it's not a static number. It's just the most recent information that we've received from the county on that particular issue.
And as we keep on getting new numbers, it appears that we would get less money. So that's why I'm so anxious to watch on the numbers with Josh, because I'm concerned about the money part.
Absolutely.
And the date of the referendum is what?
So it's going to be November 2nd, so.
So we're down to days.
We are.
We don't have enough time to make an impact on this, in my opinion. I might go overboard, but I don't think we have time to get any meaningful information out. And I don't know about you folks, but I have yet to hear someone say they support it. And that's because of the poor communication led by the county, in my opinion. And it's a shame because GLN is a creative, often revenue source, it would be very meaningful for us, but it's vital to some of our sister communities here. And I don't know if they've got the word, I've heard about this Boosh thing, but I haven't seen anything about Boosh.
Right.
Right, which brings me to, we had $15,000 that we allocated to that. And I'm just curious how, if that money's been spent, or how it's being spent, or whether it's.
What was, it wasn't 15, it was 10?
No, it was 15.
A portion of it's been committed so that we can work with the consultant to try to use their marketing avenues to get some of the information out there, but not 100% of those funds have been committed at this point.
Right. So one of the things that was brought up to me recently, and I agree with Glenn, I listened to a lot of people, and I have, I have one person I can refer back to who I know supports it. But other than that, the large majority has developed their own information. And I think a lot of it really is consistent with what we heard with those varying numbers. And if we're not sure, they're not going to be sure, and they're not putting their necks out on that. So that is a concern.
I've got something here. I'm going to steal some of your words, Councilman Lennox, okay? I appreciate working with you as far as the financing is concerned. And Councilman Lennox has said to me time and time again, we have to accept and appreciate that Town of Hilton Head is a donor municipality, right? And I'm embracing that to a degree, okay? We say utilize all available resources at the federal, state, and local levels. I'm keen in on federal and state here. I'd like to see us leverage a little bit more, okay? I mean, there's tons of infrastructure money coming down the pipeline. In the past, we have had organizations like the Chamber or interest groups kind of lobby for money for Hilton Head, right? And I appreciate that gravely. But us taking a little bit more control of that, I think is important, okay? So that we control our destiny at the end of the day, all right? And I think that it's one thing to have a chamber function where we get state or federal representatives coming here and giving a great speech. But it's another thing to have them working on our behalf to make sure that monies are coming back to Hilton Head, which is really the diamond here in our state, right? So more effort in that area, and more discussion at the policy level as to how we go after those funding, I think is important.
I would second that enthusiastically.
What would you suggest we do, Alex? What would you suggest we do, Alex?
Yeah. Well, I think it's a little bit deeper dive than, you know, just us getting, being reactive to monies that may be coming, okay? But more so us being at the table when the conversations are being had at the state and federal level when it comes to budgetary items, okay? And, you know, there are ways to do that. But it's not necessarily a letter of support coming from somebody else to us on an item versus us having somebody in the room, okay? That's it.
Mark, you've had two conversations so far with Nancy Mace, and she's been pretty good with the information and everything. But she says as a freshman, she has very little control over anything. She'll be honest with us, but she knows what we need. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask. If I may, Alex's comment, I think raises the question, I mean, if we were a private corporation, would we see the value of having our own lobbyists, or plural?
Yeah.
From a town standpoint, if we want someone that's skilled in this area and that has accountability and does this for a living, should we, as a town, think about a position of lobbyists to augment what's being done today?
Excellent question. Thank you.
And the answer is?
The county has one. I think they're helpful. I think that if you asked me this five years ago, I'd say no, simply because of the relationships at the state level. But with new stimulus money and that money on the table, we're back home working. We're relying upon Senator Davis and the state delegation to help us. But nobody's there, sitting in the chair, hearing the reports, hearing the updates. When we're there and we can bring that mindset back home and be strategic about it, that's the only way we can get in that business. The lobbyists would help. Now, I also don't want to set us up for failure. There's a lot of lobbyists in the state. They're all chasing the same dollar bills. But we're not in the game in that regard. I think there's another question, sir.
Senator Davis is a fantastic resource.
Amazing.
Does a great job. I think we all hold him in high regard. But sometimes our interest in his territory could be at odds with somebody else's interest in the same territory. So that inherent conflict is real, and what do we do about it?
Mark and Eric Greenway are going to start spending more time in Columbia on behalf of the county and the town. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't want to miss David.
That may have been an answer to the question I was going to ask. Mark, do you feel as though this town has an intentional policy to influence state and? and federal monies coming in this direction?
That's a hard yes or no. I think, I think it depends, right? It depends on the source, it depends on what we have as an initiative. And I think lobbyists, if we would, if we would work with a lobbyist, I would suggest this, we just don't get focused on the dollar bills. But that it's real policy in that we also perhaps talk, let me talk with Mr. Greenway and see if we can partner up because lobbyists are strong regionally.
My question wasn't directed towards having a lobbyist or not, it was, do we as a town have an active and intentional program to influence state and federal money? I think the answer is not at this time.
Not at this time.
So I think at the very least, that's something we ought to be contemplating.
And we will add this to this, the benefit of this discussion is we're taking notes. Did you grab that? Sean, you got that? Okay, so we'll add that as a tactic.
It's incredibly important because so many of the things that we're trying to accomplish here on Hilton Head can't be accomplished because of state legislation.
Correct. ATAX is a good example. You've asked me about ATAX and getting a meeting together, and I've written that post-it note down five times. If we had some extra help, we would already have been discussing. So thank you. And I reserve the right because this isn't final yet. If we look where we are right now, right, spring, summer, fall, winter, I think we need to push out phase two, but as we really get into the tactics, provide, I can read it from my page a little easier. Sorry. It's not in the same order. Provide periodic updates on the status of alternative funding sources that have been pursued and the overall effectiveness on identifying and obtaining alternative revenues. Discuss corresponding use restrictions that may require, may be required depending upon the source of funding. Examine town development review fees, and then also examine stormwater impact fee rates. Development review fees, I'm not sure when the last time we've looked at them are, but what we as a, you know, with our NPDES system and the extra work we're working on, I think it's important that we measure how much time goes into making sure the island is a great place with how much staff time's being put in there. I'm not, I'm not saying let's increase fees, I'm saying let's assess it. And let's just not leave it to be 10 years old and simply be satisfied. Any other questions on this one before we move on? We've grabbed a few things, the conversation's helpful.
You mentioned municipal improvement district, and it's something that all town managers are interested in having, but never yet, but I don't know what it is.
It's a, well, it's, it's a fee, so to speak, in a district as defined, and each property at a certain actionable item, at a certain threshold, funds the district. You create really, it's a similar, to keep it simple, it's almost like a TIF district with its own capital improvement program attached to it. There's some state law around it, but it definitely needs the vote. My thought was a municipal improvement district on Main Street, but the more I started to dive into it, I just don't know if there's an appetite. But again, it's something that we need to explore. If nothing else, I can bring it to you and say, we've looked at this and based upon the complications or opportunities, I think it's a good idea or I think it's a bad idea.
Okay.
So I haven't dove deep yet, but I put it on there, knowing we need to do it.
Well, thank you for the introduction. I'll also look into them a little bit more so I can educate myself. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, next. In, all right, so let's see if this works. Implement parking master plan, short-term regs, affiliated agency, there we go. Mr. Gruber.
So we've had a kind of very high-level overview, but to kind of dig down a little bit into what the process is going to look like, I first kind of want to start by going over a little bit of history because I think it's important for purposes of this particular item. With the 10-year census that comes out, we are constitutionally mandated to redraw our ward district boundaries to make sure that we meet several very clear and distinct constitutional principles, one of which being one person, one vote. And what that means is there should be an equal number of people allocated to each district so that each district's representation on council has a fair and equal weight. Now, that's just one example, there are other than examples that go with that. We have to make sure that the districts that we draw are contiguous to one another. So you can't just pick one street here, one street here, and have a Jackson Pollock painting by the time you're done with it. It needs to be clear and distinct boundaries so that people know with some kind of certainty which ward or which district they fall into. We also want to make sure that we recognize and understand that there are communities of interest on the island. So people that are of like mind, like beliefs, that should be kind of grouped together to the greatest extent that we can while balancing out all those other principles because those interests should be reflected then in the policymakers that are elected to council that then bring forward the interests of those communities. So all of those are very important factors, but they all have to come together into this redrawn plan. And what the town has done historically, at least for the last 20 years, if not more, has at least initially begun with utilizing the services of the state to help us take the census district information and incorporate it into kind of a baseline plan that if all other variables were equal, this is the plan that they would bring forward to make sure that each one of those constitutional variables has been satisfied. Because their goal is not necessarily to pick or draw boundaries that are, you know, the best for individual people or individual groups. Their goal is to draw a plan that is unquestionably constitutional in its nature, and if it were reviewed or if it were challenged, would be upheld later on. So what we will do is work with the state, the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office, to have them take our new census data, to plug it into a baseline map that they will then come forward and bring to the public and bring to you for review and discussion. We will then have an active opportunity to sit down with each one of you individually, go over that data, and if you want to look at making changes, we absolutely can do that. If you want to say, you know, this side of the street, I know these folks, they are really aligned with this group more than they are another group, we can sit there and play with the census tracts and see how, if we put one in one district or one in another district, what it does to those population levels. Basically, we'll be able to work with you to look at potential modifications. Ultimately, that may develop in several alternatives for council to consider. We'll bring those forward to the public for discussion and comment, and then ultimately get town council to adopt one of the alternatives as our redrawn plan.
And when we spoke with you, it was important that we had public meetings, right? And so right out of the gate, we have here, fall, winter, 2021, work with the state. It doesn't, it just isn't engage with them, simply not turning it over to them, but to conduct public education, public input, I think we also need to have public input and education meetings, work through all of these issues with the state at the table, not by ourselves, and then engage them, and definitely not them without us. And then move forward, spring 2022, where we start conducting the public education on the proposed redistricting and provide that back to you. So it's, it's a process. Is there anything that you want me to know about moving forward as we implement this to get it ready for your consideration?
I have a question, but it doesn't relate to what you just asked. Josh, for my benefit and perhaps the benefit of the population on Hilton Head, do you have any sense at this time of how much our ward boundaries might be affected?
So what we knew at least a couple of weeks ago was the total number of population changes, which I think was 562 from the last census figures. What we don't know is how those figures are apportioned within our existing districts. That's information that the state is going to take directly from the census and plug into that baseline map. And then when they come to present it, they'll be able to discuss those variation changes from our existing one to what the baseline map represents.
Thank you, so at this time, no?
Yeah, correct, not yet.
What he meant was no.
Mark, I have a question when David's finished.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to see something in the nature of an interactive map that where you adjust one, that means you have to make an adjustment in another so that we can kind of see it live, so to speak, on a map? Is that possible?
Yes, it is possible. With our great GIS staff, we will make that possible with the note.
Thank you.
Just to show the transition or the proposed or anticipated transition. Yes, sir. Very much so.
Mark, are the census numbers that we get at the local level consistent in a part of the county and statewide numbers as well?
Yes, sir.
So they're all consistent?
Yes, is my understanding, is my belief, yes, it has to be.
They all come from the same source.
Right. Yes, sir.
I don't think you can answer this question, but if, it's probably realistic that the census is not, does not accurately reflect the true Spanish population. Right? So if that's the case, in a de facto way, do we bring that into play in our thinking?
I think we bring that into play in our assessment, but we do have strict rules and regs to follow, and it's got to be, has to be based upon real data.
Correct. The census figures are the official figures that we have to draw our maps off of. So we can't say, well, we assume that there's another 3,000 people that are undercounted and draw the maps with those numbers in mind. We have to use the census figures.
Mr. Lennox?
How would you compare, and it's probably your best guess, the census numbers versus voter registration numbers?
So census numbers should incorporate everybody who lives in an entire household, so those that are under the age of 18 and all those that are then over the age of 18. So your registered voters are probably going to be a fraction of the overall population. So I think if our number was 38,000 and change, the number of registered voters, I think, is somewhere around 18,000. So that kind of gives you an idea of the percentage of registered voters versus the overall population.
And do we know where those registered voters are?
To a certain extent, we can see the historical voting records, so we know how many people voted in District 1A, 1B, 1C, et cetera. But as far as the live counts, who are, where they are before an election, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Any other questions, Ms. Becker?
Some of my questions, you mentioned that there was a difference of 560 or so. So two questions. So that's, that doesn't sound like a big number. So would one therefore assume that's not a big change? Or, first question, I know, no assumptions, it's just a question, don't even waste the time answering. Secondly, just, secondly, I would imagine that with all the new development in certain areas, we may be able to sort of imagine where some of those new numbers were coming from, but just as a global picture of how that all kind of looks, those were my thoughts. And I'm not really sure where there was a question in there, but those were two, did I get those two points? Would those be relevant points?
Those are relevant.
Very good points.
Yeah, I think there's two things to really kind of point out with regards to our jurisdiction. One, we have a very large second homeowner population. And when you have a second, you can choose which one you reflect as your primary residence for census purposes. So you may have picked one as compared to the other, but it doesn't mean you're necessarily there any more than any other place. The second is remembering that when the census was occurring was right in the middle of the pandemic. So in terms of the ability to get accurate counts, it is absolutely influenced by that event that was going on.
I've got something.
Yes, sir.
Some of the intricacies that have been discussed thus far, i.e., voting records and that sort of thing, would that be taken into consideration at the Fiscal Affairs Office as they develop that baseline?
No, they don't look at voter registration, they look at population.
Okay, and in the past, Josh, I appreciate you giving us that 20-year history. Was that process similar to what you're suggesting now, which is once the baseline was established, it then went to the policymakers individually to bless, so to speak, or was there some committee or task force or something assigned to it in the past?
So it was the policymakers, it was council, and ultimately what came out was two separate maps. That's what was then brought forward to the public for discussion and comment, and then council ultimately voted to adopt one of the two maps.
Okay. I just think this is worthy a little bit more discussion, okay? But first of all, I've got, you know, some anxiety about someone, somewhere else drawing the lines for us, number one, okay? And I've heard horror stories of places where the elected officials would just draw where they want, where they can have the most quote-unquote "power," so to speak, okay? And I don't want us to be perceived guilty as that. And, you know, Hilton Head is very, very different, you know? It's particularly when you start drawing the lines of planning developments, these new developments, places of interest, and so on and so on. I mean, I'll, I'll just, you know, raise this, you know, there are times when I don't know if the person's calling me is mine or Mr. Stanford's or Mr. Hawkins', right? And we're all guilty of that, right? So I just think there's some, some form of not just educating the public along the way, okay, but some representation as to how we go through this process, I think, is important, that gives now confidence back to those that are voting, that we did our due diligence versus just getting in the room and drawing lines. That's, that's my point.
And I'm just going to follow up with a comment that I think that one of the real strengths of this council that I've appreciated over the time that I've spent here, and even previously, is that we all work together for the benefit of the entire island. So whether someone knows that they're calling me in my ward or if someone's calling me from a different ward and asking me for, to let them share their thoughts and concerns, A, I usually always get back to the person that, the ward they come from, but I take that initiative seriously regardless of what ward they're coming from to me. The idea that they picked up the phone and had faith and confidence in me means an incredible amount to me personally, and I take this job very seriously. And so Ward 4, very important to me, don't misunderstand, but I'm open to communication with anyone on this island.
May I make a suggestion so we can move on? Let's workshop this. All due respect, Mayor, maybe we could plan a special workshop or when we have a light agenda, if we do, add this as an item and bring in, and we've got to keep calling them, the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office to have that workshop because if they hear from you and they can settle the nerves and we actually add to the ingredients here, public input and workshops and not just public education as this is reading, I think that we will have a good program. That, would that settle this and solve this and give us confidence to move forward? Yes? Okay. Josh, next, sir.
The real estate transfer fee.
So we jumped over this one. This is important, and I think this is going to, I won't put John on the spot anymore, but conduct a comprehensive review of our current fiscal policies to clarify, right? Review current debt, conduct survey to best practices across organizations, how are we using our dollars? Very, very important that we're getting into that. It really aligns with adopt a real estate transfer fee and extension and expansion. Before we leave today, we have a memo on this, I will hand it out, it gives a background on the real estate transfer fee. You can just bring it home and have that to review, but this, this should be in our near future. As we look at it, project milestones, developing an, it's a good thing I can't see that, develop an informational memorandum on the history of the real estate transfer fee, we sped that up, you'll have that by the time you leave today. Identify potential terms and conditions... Identify potential terms and conditions that could be included with the proposed extension and develop a list of necessary stakeholders to talk through. Josh Curtis is here as well. I think on this one, before we really dive in, what we're really trying to accomplish is pursuing an extension of our transfer fee and evaluate modifications of its use to allow for maintenance and improvement of existing properties that have been acquired. Josh Curtis, confirmation, that is a local ordinance decision, correct? Microphone.
Yes, that is a local ordinance decision. There is probably a discussion that needs to be had, though, regarding the impact of the state statute that preserved that for us and whether or not that has any impact on what we can do with it.
I have a comment on that. And that is that I think it's important for us to get legal advice from our lawyers here about what are the limits on changes in the real estate transfer fee, which I think is what Curtis was just talking about. That is, do we just reenact it as is? I think that would probably be safe. But it's always easy to tinker with one of these things, and if we tinker with it, are we pushing it too far and all of a sudden we're going to find it thrown out in the courts? We need some legal advice on that, and we need to be very conservative, in my opinion, about how we go about changing this ordinance, if at all. Thank you.
I think a political decision will determine whether or not we get an extension. The rest of the counties and municipalities in the state don't have this capability. And so if we try to massage it so they perceive it as being unfair or going too far, I think we jeopardize our opportunity to have it at all. So I'd be very cautious. But this is one item that I think we need to start talking to our legislative delegation today.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are the reasons why I thought this was worthy for us to talk about, right? And once we do get the news, good or bad, I think it then changes our mindset in terms of our revenue sources, right? Because we've been screaming that maybe we want to expand. If we can't, well, now we need to start looking at some new money to get some stuff done around here. So this is definitely top of the list and important.
I think this is a game changer. We can't allow this to sunset. We have to get it renewed.
Could someone also share what the role is with the area Realtors Association relative to this?
Mayor, I'll defer to you on that.
They have a deciding group, Bill. I mean, they, they decide whether they're going to extend it or not. What they're looking to do now is to extend it, but what purpose is the town's going to use the money for? And that's who we really are in that process. Mark's talking to Gene Beck this week or next week, next week probably, right?
Yes, sir. We already have a meeting on the books to meet with Gene, and this be one of the topics.
If you could refresh for us who the board, who's on the board of the Realtors Association, because that's, in that room behind closed doors will be a decision made, and many of us probably know a lot of those people. We're forgetting what role, we're forgetting who's on board currently.
Okay, I'm making a note. Sean, if you can make that note, identify who's on that Realtors Association or Realtors Board, and please, if you could, send that out to Town Council directly. All right. Can I move on from this topic? Yes, okay. What's next, Josh? We have three minutes for everything else each. I'm just kidding. We're making great time.
If I could just add, Tom Lennox just reminded me, the Realtors are having an oyster roast next week. So if we find out who's on the board, and then, a suggestion to our colleagues here that if you can go, good time to do some lobbying. I was going to say schmoozing, but I guess.
On Facebook Live, I'm going to say discussing. Hi, everybody. Now, it's a very important topic. It's something that was on my radar from Josh and Mr. Lennox and the mayor as we started talking about budgets, so this is a great direction. All right, next topic, Josh. Okay. Oh, next. Just real quick, provide a safe, clean, enjoyable, beach-free, beach shuttle service that will transport citizens between parking areas and public amenities, evaluate regs, and manage the shuttles. So there's several things, I'm not going to dive into all of them, I know someone brought this up. Two things that we're doing just to show you that we have refined, and it definitely takes a village. Ms. Becker brought to our attention that there were some complaints on one of the trolleys going through a residential neighborhood with a diesel engine several times a day that we worked with LRTA or with the shuttle, the shuttle service with, for?
Palmetto Breeze.
Palmetto Breeze, thank you. Jen? Jen? Now you wonder why I quote Jen, she's always on it. We modified the, not the route, a little bit of the route, but also the type of vehicle. We also worked with Palmetto Breeze to connect the USCB Caligny parking lot to Caligny Beach. And so, again, we're always on it. I wasn't the one that brought this up, so just knowing that, was it Ms. Becker that brought it up, or?
It was me.
Right.
And my reason for it is because...
Microphone.
And my reason for bringing it up was more because it seemed as though it's an established policy that we have this shuttle, and it's only been in effect for a couple of years. And through, through those couple of years, we've had various discussions about whether it makes sense for us to continue it, based on ridership. And granted, it's run by a grant, but we also contribute funds to that. And so the purpose, the cost-benefit analysis. So as I read through this document, there's an assumption that it'll always remain, and I'm not sure that decision has been, that has been evaluated and a decision has been made. That's why I brought it up.
Thank you. We will plug that into our to-do, so to speak, to the tactics that we will provide to you. And I think that's very important as the, as the, through our new inter-agency funding request process, where folks make that application to us through Finance Committee and ultimately to council at part of the budget consideration, we will add to here that on this free service that we provide that cost benefit. And provide some real data that you can see, ridership as well as our costs versus that return. Defining how we measure, it's going to be more difficult. Are we, are we, you know, return on investment in this area isn't a penny for a penny, it's a community enhancement. And so I think we have to be really clear, I will ask you to be very clear to me as a council on how you, what your recommendations are on that measurement.
And just to stand that topic, and I know, oh, sorry, Glenn, do you want to go?
A subset of this issue is Islanders Beach Park. What does shuttle mean in relation to Islanders Beach Park? If we're going to have a shuttle, is it just for tourists or is it also for residents? These are questions that we have to deal with. Islanders Beach Park is a hot subject from a lot of points of view, there are citizens fired up about it. And I'm very pleased that the town manager and staff have been aggressively looking at it, but this to me is a subtopic of this very question. Thank you.
Anything else on this topic?
Not necessarily directly with this topic, but just to point that, to the fact that throughout the strategic plans, right, there's, just like this being an assumption that it's there, it's going to continue to always be there, there are other areas that there are, there appears issues like that, and I don't want to use the words "issues" because they're just really not an issue, but there are other places where there have been things put in place, there's been discussions, but not necessarily a confirmation that it's there to stay forever. But that's all. So I'm just watching and wondering and thinking.
That's good. This is great conversation, you know, under purpose, it does read, and I will make sure that it's very clear in these phases, but evaluate regs to better manage private shuttles is in here. So not to belabor that, I think we can move on from this one. What's next, Josh? Lunch here? All right, perfect time to take a quick break, let's, yes, sir.
Question from a constituent. Will lunch be, in a sense, executive session or will it be televised?
Televised.
Thank you.
We have to keep moving, there's no, there's no executive session planned for today. Let's have our lunch, and while we're eating, let's talk about branding. I have a little bit of experience from a brand perspective, I'll share that with you. But I also want to walk out of here today and truly understand what that means to Town Council, though. Mr. Mayor? Mayor, we're back live, cameras are live, we're back. So we left off at establish Island Brand Development Strategy. I forget who pulled this off, Josh, are you aware, but it doesn't matter, that we'll develop an Island Brand campaign in partnership with our DMO and identify a vision and values and a framework to communicate our vision, to enhance our image and brand. To me, that's what I understood, again, first time with you was at that strategic plan retreat, but that's how I understood it. But then, over time, I've heard brand come up on several occasions. So I think hit pause and help me understand what that truly means today from a brand standpoint. Please.
So since it's a question and no one else has jumped in, I'll jump in. I think that, I think that the discussion about brand has been kind of had over the course of time, and I always fall shy of understanding what is meant by it, since Hilton Head, I think, has a brand, right? We know who we are. Maybe we're not expressing it clearly, maybe we haven't identified some areas that we want to highlight, like our sustainability and ecology, concern for the ecology. But I think generally speaking, people know who we are, they know what to expect when they get here, and perhaps there's places that we need to develop and highlight that will make that more clear to other people. I was just reminded, I think most of us were at a recent municipal association meeting, and there was a presentation made by a gentleman who talked about, I guess, branding. And I remember walking away from it thinking it was an exceptional presentation and really drove home the idea of why it's imperative that we establish ourselves as who we are and make the world know that we are the most excellent, the best in the world. If y'all recall who were there, his very dramatic way of expressing, the best in the world. And that kind of aligns with my thinking. And so I think that's more of what we should say to, to the world, is that we're not only best in class, but we are the excellence capital of the world, as was aptly handed off to me by others in the room. Ms. Diane has captured that sentiment and shared it with me. She, and we sat in on that same presentation that day together and I think walked away with those ideas. So if anyone else is ready to talk, I'll stop.
To me, when this island was originally developed, the thing that people got to know best was golf. That is certainly secondary to the brand now, but some of that lingers. I think right now, our brand primarily tends to surround tourism, and that's because of our DMO and the challenge we've given to our DMO. But to me, our brand should equally emphasize families, it should equally emphasize retirement, safe, healthy retirement community. And I don't think those things are being emphasized in our brand development, and those things should be. The DMO should be charged with more than putting more heads in beds, rather should be promoting these other things that I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll chime in. I think brand is, in our, in our case here on the island, is more about the values that makes our island unique. Activities are a part of it, but I tend to go towards the value, the values that the island want to preserve. And out of those values, we express activities. So we have to be clear when we speak about brand, and I think it's up to the council and town to articulate and promulgate those qualities that distinguish us. So I agree that this is something that we ought to be pursuing, because all of us may feel we know what our brand is, but in order to appropriately market it, we have to be more specific. So I, I think this is headed in a good direction, I thank the town manager for putting it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I think when we talk about brand, it's a pretty amorphous concept. And I think just as we need to come up with a glossary of terms on some other matters, we need to identify a list of tangible things, if you will, and, and see how we rate in comparison to other locations. So I would think in terms of brand, I would look at, how are we doing in terms of transportation? How are we doing in terms of healthcare? How are we doing in terms of education from children to seniors? Seniors being continuing education. How are we doing in terms of maintaining or creating open spaces? How is, how is the service level with our, our colleagues in the community that own restaurants, as an example? How are we doing in terms of cost of living? How are we doing in terms of air quality? How are we doing in terms of water and sewer throughout the community? And I think if we come up with maybe the top 10 or 15 that are tangible, then we can demonstrate and we can communicate. Otherwise, we're just waxing and waning philosophically.
I would, I'd piggyback on what Bill was saying. When I, when I speak of values, I'm speaking of some specific... When I, when I speak of values, I'm speaking of some specific things that distinguish our community. Volunteerism is one. Environmental protection or stewardship is another. Equality in design and development. Planning innovation. Those are things that are sort of fundamental. And there are others. Those are sort of fundamental building blocks of our brand. Thank you.
So not getting in the weeds, it sounds like, and I'm, I'm not hearing anything different, that this description is important and that there's some agreement that this is the description and the work that gets done. And I'll say it again. We develop a brand development campaign in partnership with our DMO to identify our vision and values and framework to communicate those vision and values that enhance all facets of our image and brand. Is that clear? Do I have walk-in, marching orders for that? Okay, then we'll move on. Next, Josh.
Research trends and implement investment class.
Okay. There we go. Research trends. We'll become known as an entity that delivers a superior level of public services as compared to its peers and will be lead, when we will be on the leading edge of new advancements, the areas of smart slash connected cities, digital service delivery, and an emphasis on overall customer experience. One example is the recent two awards on our website. So if we're going to do it, we do it well and we do it as, as, you know, the intent is as well as anybody. And, right, to quote Ricky Bobby, "If you ain't first, you're last." Right? So to have that mentality of, of work, whether we're building a project in the, for the public realm or we're enhancing a service. Is, is that clear? Do we need to talk about that more? We're going to run out of time if we spend a whole bunch of time on these. Good? I don't know who pulled that off, but if we want to talk about it for a few minutes, I'm, I'm open. I just know there's some heavier items to talk through.
It was me. And, shocking. It was me. And I guess as you've described it, if that's the parameters, I'm, I'm good with, with that. I'm also familiar with, and, and I'll tell you why I brought it up. I'm also familiar with having had the opportunity to read some of the management professional journals that exist out there of some new trends and some new emphasis in terms of, I guess, municipal service delivery, et cetera. And I'm not sure what I'm reading necessarily falls into this category, but I, I think that some of what is good for others is not necessarily good for Hilton Head. And so we need to be very, very careful that everything that's written and hyped and current and et cetera, doesn't mean that it needs to be implemented into our town. And that we must be very cognizant of, of what we're doing each step of the way so we avoid those pitfalls. That's all.
Okay. And what's going to help me and help our team? If, if you as a council hear of things and come across articles of things that we should be doing, send them my way or send the ideas. I think that, you know, that, that's an all-day, every-day, all-the-time initiative. Ms. Becker, I'll give you some comfort. As I'm, as I'm looking through this, this book, this book of work, it's important that you know, and it's, it's intentional, that even those operational items are in the strategic plan. So us around the room and staff will not have our own agendas to, to run down the road, putting new things together, starting new projects, telling me that we don't have enough time to do all this because they're doing something that's not in the strategic plan. If one thing there is about me as a manager, I'm very consistent that if it's not in this plan, I'm not spending my time on it because that's where you'll measure my success and this is where I'll measure our success. And so very clearly, if there's programs, and I, and I went over that early on, not just policy, not just project, but the operations and some of those operational items are programs that I will absolutely bring through this work product. So as you adopt this and you tell me I can be in the business, I'm going to run with it. So nothing is going to surprise you in the future. That's the goal.
Well, I appreciate that and I, and I hear you clearly and I understand and look forward to that, that happening. I, I also wonder, and this might be a discussion for later in some other category, and I don't want to use up the three minutes that's left in each one of these categories by me talking. But I do wonder, in some of what you just mentioned, how ad hoc, non-appointed, non-appointed council-approved committees influence some of that work and, and that clear delineation in terms of who's responsible to whom and who oversees what and where the transparency and all of that comes.
Okay. What's next, Josh? See click fix. I'll go over that quick. Fire rescue. Fire, so one was the reaccreditation. Congratulations to chief and the entire department, leaders amongst leaders, as I, as I say. Reaccreditation, fire rescue strat plan, implement cultural affairs strategic plan. I'll hit pause on this for a second. This was approved. It was rescinded. You've asked me for some new information. I'm collecting that information and I will bring that back to you at an appropriate time. Yes, sir.
Microphone. It's my intention right now to bring a strategic plan before council for a vote on November 2nd. It is also my intention to bring the cultural arts thing to the council before we vote on the strategic plan to be revoted on again with the information that we have.
Okay.
Not much more on dates, but the purpose is here, the cultural plan will come first to re-vote on that and then we'll go into the voting on the strategic plan. So we have a whole plan together rather than just pieces.
Well, I'd like clarification on that because there have been, as you know, as everyone is aware, issues with regard to this strategic plan. I have received the information partially that I've requested and the answers I got are unsatisfactory. So I need to have, I need to have better clarification on that. And if you're interested in talking about that, now I am.
No, people, you ask the information firm. If you don't get it, I wish you'd let me know and we can work on it. But I will bring this to the council before we do the strategic plan. But I think we should go on a strategic plan as one and not leave pieces out.
So as we talk about the strategic plan and, as we talk about the strategic plan for this particular office, then is it your anticipation that pieces of this that are not founded in the founding documents and job descriptions and the like are struck from that plan?
It's my intention that pieces in that document that we're not happy with or some of us not happy with will be discussed and voted upon at that time.
Okay. Well, this is where the issue of transparency comes from and I need to make sure that when we're doing that, that the language and the activities that have taken place without approval and behind closed doors have been struck from this and that there's a clear understanding.
Nothing will be struck. It will be part of the discussion that day before we vote on it.
Okay. I think it's going to need to be a transparent, transparent discussion. And here to fore, I have bit my tongue, but I will not bite it off.
I'm going to ask anybody to bite their tongue off, but we will discuss this openly before we take the vote on it and that piece back in again.
Mayor, you mentioned November 2nd. So if I'm understanding this, we're going to bring, I'm going to bring with staff the cultural affairs strategic plan forward at a council meeting for discussion and reconsideration prior to the adoption of what we'll, what we'll call.
Yeah, because it's my intention, and the council could think differently. It's my intention to make sure that when we adopt the strategic plan, this is part of the strategic plan, whether it's the way it is now or we changed it or whatever it is. But it should be discussed first so we can adopt this strategic plan as one and not keep adding to it.
Right. Understood.
Everybody okay with that, I mean?
We're good.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned November 2nd. This document, my intent, and we have a lot of work to do with some edits, to bring it forward to you as a document at the second meeting in November.
That's what I said, November 16th.
Okay. Or the, or the latest, or the latest, the first meeting in December.
I'd appreciate it if you could do November 16th.
All right. Josh needs to leave right now to go back to the office.
That's okay.
Please excuse him.
Josh, see you tomorrow.
Can I ask one last follow-up on that? I know we've talked about it. David brought it up. I know you responded to him during town council meeting, that we would be back in chambers. I think this is a sufficiently important topic, given the information that I've received, that the public has full knowledge and input in terms of what my, the answers I received were. And I would think that that means we should be doing this in an open session in town hall.
We will not be back in session in town hall by November 16th.
And I respectfully ask that we delay it.
And I tell you why, is that besides we're getting the medical reports on what we need for that date, I also need a report from the town as to the safety requirements that we required to go back into session. I mean, the last thing we need is not, people not getting the virus but not getting shot at the same time. And I'm very concerned about the safety of the council and the staff. So I'm waiting for that report to Commander Mr. Orlando as to where we are with that. Is that right, Mark?
Yes.
Understood. And I protect, protect everyone's safety and concerns for that as well. But I do think that this is a sufficient topic of community concern and interest that it be done in open session with opportunities for people to speak and not just three minutes on a broken, broken-up Zoom call.
Josh, what's next? Culture of high organizational performance, see click fix. Wasn't that on there too?
Let me just discuss that. Or no, I'm sorry. That was the one that we brought up, the see click fix. And as you were getting there, we got sidetracked. That was the next one.
See click fix?
Yes. That's what we're on.
All right. It's an app. From anywhere, anytime, anyplace, you can tell us that there's a pothole, a light out, garbage trash can overflowing. And you get on the app and it's, it's simple. You see something, you click it and we fix it. So it's interactive. It, it, it's a, it's a national firm. They're in a lot of places. I've had some great experience with them. Please by no means does this mean that you should stop calling me to tell me you called me one day, "Sir, there was a tree down in the middle of the road after a rainstorm." I, I want to get those calls. But it's also really good. If we put this to work properly and we communicate it properly and we market it properly, there's folks in our community that can be straight, a straight line of communication to town hall. They don't have to look for a number. They don't have to find the right person. That, I would say, that work order, it's a friendly work order in that sense. It's logged straight through the app. It's straight into the facilities management. The email response or the, the response in the app tells you, "Thank you for your inquiry." When we fix it, our, our, our role is to communicate and to fix. Others' role is to see it and click it. And once we fix it, there's also an external communication that lets the people know, whether it's you as council members, your constituents or whomever, say, to say, "Thank you for bringing this to our attention and your issue has been resolved. Let us know if you have any questions." And so I think it's so good to have that in place. The, the trick is getting people to know it's there. Well, the hard part, I would say.
Excuse me. I'm a little bit in the fog here. Are we talking about the asset management?
No. Josh was jumping ahead because he thinks I'm behind. We have to talk about see click fix first.
You don't want to talk about?
I do. But Josh jumped ahead on me.
Oh, all right. Oh, my God.
He was actually leaving to go update the strategic plan and threw him off.
All right.
Yeah. No, this is see click fix app because this was one of the things. I've, I've talked about it. I think that answered some questions. Anything else on this topic?
Are you saying that we can go on the internet and see a demonstration of see click fix?
We should be, there's got to be a demo somewhere. I'll, I will get you something.
Sounds fascinating. I'd just like to see it.
It's fabulous. It's live and functional on our website. I'm not sure of the status of the app, but it's coming. Correct? And, and Ange, the takeaway.
It is coming.
And it's coming per the schedule. And the takeaway, when we leave here, is let's get council some link on a, on a, on a tutorial or the application of it.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I follow up on the cool application like that that someone suggested to me recently? And I'm just going to throw it out there. It doesn't have to be discussed, but I think it's a really good idea to at least think about. And maybe it's already known. But I think Lufton uses it, actually. It's called Open Checkbook. And it's a same sort of programming where with under, under every budget category that it is clearly transparent in terms of who the contractors are, the checks that have been written, the contracts that have been made, who made them, et cetera. I think that's real important and, and it kind of folds into my concerns with the Office of Cultural Affairs.
Okay. Sure. Absolutely. We'll look into that. And we'll add it to the strategic plan as an extra item. Got that? Yes, sir. And, yes, sir. And that's, that's the plan. I'm not explaining every detail, but I will not add anything to this without consensus of council. Next, HR strategic plan, technology and innovation strategic plan. Josh, what am I looking for?
Looking for asset management plan.
All right. Beach resiliency and re-nourishment plan, solid waste and recycling, PSDs. Josh, did I pass it?
No.
All right. It's an economy. All right. Well, national leadership, sustainable. All right, here we go. Adopt MASC model business license, town-owned property management, asset management and utilization plan. You're on, sir.
Thanks, Mark.
In a nutshell.
Yeah, so this is an effort that we've been involved with for, for quite a long time. And it's, it's long overdue. We're trying to develop basically the entire history of the land acquisition program that towns had since inception in, in the mid-'80s to understand funding sources used, current disposition of each asset. And we've been part of enough discussions to know that it's not, these are not just simple straightforward acquisitions with one funding source. Oftentimes, there's different funding sources that have been used in combination. There's restrictive covenants that come along with some of these purchases. So we are evaluating these. And our record-keeping since the beginning of the program has sort of had varied level of detail. And so we've had staff, community development, legal, GIS, all working in concert to develop this information, refine it. We have developed an initial dashboard. And I know that you saw Jennifer Ray's CIP dashboard at the council meeting the other day. It'll be a similar tool that will be used for this effort. So it'll be an interactive map. You click on each parcel, each asset the town owns, understand the funding source, the date purchased, the amount paid, so on and so forth. But to reduce this down into discussion for council on opportunities for assets that may be utilized going forward in the future. So we're, we're optimistic and we'll have this delivered by the January date that the mayor and Mark have discussed here earlier today.
Good, Sean. Thanks. Any questions on that?
So if we, we find that there's a piece of land that the town owns that is in fact unencumbered, in other words, it's not, doesn't have to be green space in perpetuity. And we have, we have a developer that looks at that as an opportunity and wants to do something in that, that land area and acquire it in a fair way so, so determined by us. What can be done concurrently to expedite the process? I know in the North End, we're drawing a circle around the Port Royal area and we'll be saying, "This is what we'd like to see developed in that area." So. So will we be doing the same thing in terms of the asset management program that, yes, this, this acreage, which is unencumbered, and if it's the will of the council, could be developed for something? Are we going to put the qualifier in that too, that this is in a zone or a district that these are the following things we'd like to see? And conversely, these are the other things we don't want to see.
I understand what you're saying, Bill, but I think, I don't mean that. We need a little workshop on this because it's a matter of, can I offer you a piece of land to do something without offering it to someone else at the same time? A lot of legal issues like to talk.
Oh, I agree.
But I think we should have a workshop and discuss this because it's more than the simple question that you had.
Right.
It's far reaching.
I totally agree on that workshop. And I, I'd love to see some criteria also on the, the land that we own that's unencumbered. If we choose to use it for something that inures to the benefit of the community, are we going to, what kind of criteria are we going to have? An example would be that if a developer wants to come in and help us on workforce housing, but the price point for the land puts that beyond a reasonable return on investment for the developer, are we going to eat it on an accounting standpoint, but on an economic standpoint, help create a more vibrant workforce? So I mean, I, we're not going to solve that today, but those are the things I'd love to start talking and debating in a workshop.
And I'd appreciate if everybody on the council would send those kind of questions, ideas, and problems to Sean, so Sean can make sure he covers that in our workshop that day. Is that okay, Sean? Is that okay, Mark? That it goes to Sean.
Yes, sir. Yeah, identify type.
There it is. I want to have a comment on what Bill said, and that is that I don't think we can put down in this type of application what we will do with a piece of property in the future. We can, we can put what the restrictions are, but then when someone comes along and says, I'm interested in this property, we negotiate a transaction in one way or the other, but we can't broadcast that because we don't know what those parameters may be.
Right. Right. Maybe I'm going a couple of steps ahead, but my point here is that the cost of dirt on this island is very expensive, and we own a lot of it, and not all of it is encumbered. So if a project comes forward that has social merit, and it could have long-term economic impact, are we going to be, are we going to have flexibility of thought so that we don't drive the deal based on the market price, we drive the deal based upon the economic impact? And we're not going to solve this today, but I would love to have a discussion like that.
Right. And again, I marked a workshop on here. There's a few things that need to come together in my mind. My recommendation on this topic is a true economic development strategy here at a local level. The Island Master Plan, so to speak, in alignment with intended land uses as we talk about districts, and we're going to get into that. And then on top of that, it's really your intended use, right? I really want everybody to know, if they're paying attention, we're always open for business. We are open for business, but we are trying to make some decisions about our future without a future plan in place. And so part of, part of my job is to put some of those future plans in place so that you have them as the baseline as you make these considerations. Two wonderful properties that are obvious. The Palmetto Bay Road Business Park site, Modern Classic Motors, if unencumbered, if without strings, with purchase or covenants, are those appropriate for an economic development or a community development strategy? I think we need to explore that, but, but unless and until we have the big picture to know, are we talking about four properties or are we talking about 400 properties? Are we talking about 1,400 acres or five acres? That's the importance and significance of this. We, we, we talk a lot about it, but until we have the data at our fingertips, we'll not be able to think big picture as well as deals. So that's, that's the goal, and that's what, that's what will be discussed at the workshop. Josh, what's next?
Well, can I just jump in because I just want to make a point?
Sorry.
And, and my point is, as we are considering all the, and it's, and it's throughout here. And I was, I, my head was spinning in a couple of places about how, how many places it, it appears, various use options for town-owned land. And I hear it from the outside too, everyone saying, well, we can do this on town-owned land, we can do that on town-owned land, et cetera. And I would like everyone to remember, as they're saying that, to listen to themselves. It's town-owned land, and it was put into whatever position it was for a particular purpose. And I would also like for everyone to keep in mind, if it's important to them, I'm willing to debate it with you, but I certainly think it represents our values as an island, that we are unique in that we are a environmentally sensitive island and that we don't have billboards or signs or even getting too large at this point. But that we are sensitive to these types of things. And the last thing that we want to do, even though we may have, you know, great ideas for this land, is to go and use all the town-owned land in development and turn ourselves into something other than what I guess I refer to as who we know we are. And that is something different than an urban center. So I just wanted to make my voice heard on that.
Yes, ma'am. You taking notes?
I want, I'd like to piggyback on the well-articulated comments of Ms. Becker. I often hear the term highest and best use. And, and the second part of that is highest and best use when? What might benefit our community today may sacrifice the community in the future. Let me give you an example. Melbourne, Australia committed when it was founded to 25% open space. And if you go to Melbourne today, you see the benefit of that, and it accrues to the quality of life of Melbourne. Beyond the environmental considerations to preserve open space, I think a quality of this community 50 years from today will be, or should be, the open space that we have preserved and the quality of that open space. And so I think when you talk about an asset management plan for the island, it isn't necessarily highest and best use for today, but also highest and best use in perpetuity. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, just, just one comment on, I appreciate the vivid discussion on this, which means we need to have a workshop, right? Absolutely. But just, just one last thing, you know, I'm, I'm focused on the words asset and plan here. And to me, it's not just a quantity of how much property we have and the uses or nonuses of that property, okay? But more so how we protect ourselves, okay? And the environment is definitely important, okay? But there are other areas that we need to protect ourselves, right? And absent a true plan, other than just how much we have, I think is important, okay? I think Councilman Hawkins is going down a road, so to speak, here. And Mark, you touched on it, without having a, a true economic development plan in front of us, it's hard to make these decisions also, right? So as we develop this, I think seeking outside expertise, so to speak, that help us not just look at this from an accounting standpoint, we paid $5 for it, there's no way in the world we're going to give it away for $4, I think is something that we need to expand our thought process on, okay? Because if it's a true goodwill for the entire community, then maybe we see the return on our investment elsewhere, okay? And that is not necessarily a part of the discussion at the moment, and it needs to be. So I just wanted to offer that.
Okay, thank you. And comprehensively review and assess approximately 1,400-acre inventory of town-owned properties to possess a full and complete understanding of historical acquisition of all town-owned properties, a source of funding to effectuate the purchase of properties and any corresponding restrictions. And I, you know, I'm hearing from you, and I believe the same thing, I want to make it clear, highest and best use of our, majority of our properties is conservation and preservation. And so the, the intent here, though, isn't just an analysis of a map, right? That's just getting started, you know? But it's also, and the town has done a tremendous job, but all those folks that have been knowing why things were bought, when they were bought, and where they're at, have retired or moved on or passed on. I do think that it's really important to put a, so to speak, game plan in place to make that public statement. If 50% of the island is a goal, is preservation and open space and, and, you know, significant designation of, of conservation, awesome. But let's, let's purposefully state that so we stop having these conversations of piecemealing of our properties. It, it doesn't, and that is not to say that Palmetto Bay Road and Modern Classic Motors aren't great sites, because some of the conversation and feedback I've heard was, let's buy sites, let's reset them, let's set the zoning in place, and let's protect them from a built environment. So all of it matters, but the sooner we know what we have, and we have, as an example, a forestry management plan in place for long-term, and that we have a site inspection plan in place, at least an annual site inspection on our properties to see them and touch them and inventory them, the, the better. And so this is a major, major undertaking. But it's also, doesn't mean that we have to finish all of this before we contemplate perhaps some of these sites. So again, they all go to, they all play in it. What else is, so workshop, yes. Josh, next. We're going to run out of time. It's, we have 55 minutes before. We're at 2:00. Do we want to talk about that? Do we want to workshop that?
What does it mean? What's wrong with that? What does it mean?
Formalize a cultural district, you know, similar to a historic district, right? We know what historic districts are like. They're on the National Historic District Register, a district. A, a property is on the National Historic District Register. South Carolina, Rock Hill was the first, Bluffton was the second, established cultural districts in their community simply to celebrate the culturally significant aspects of it. It's through the governor's office, through the South Carolina Governor's Office and Department. It's, it's, it's been brought up and for discussion.
So this means more than historic neighborhoods?
Could.
Because we've already designated historic neighborhoods.
Locally. Locally designate, not at a state level.
Bluffton has one.
Bluffton has a cultural district. It's more or less the same as the historic district. And what it does is it simply allows for the celebration of, of culture in addition to history in a specific district. It, it sets the table for potentially grant applications. It's organized, and from a marketing standpoint, it's plugged in as such through the DMO. There, there's some, there's some succession things in place. We have some culturally significant places on our island, not just, not just locally, not just regionally, but I would say in history. And do we only want to have local districts, or do we want to have districts at a higher significant level?
I guess it would depend on what the requirements are.
Sure.
And expectations are. And I think that's a lot of information that we don't have with regard to that, so I'd like more information.
Right. And I want to, I want to say that because we're running out of time. It's in here, again, what are we going to do, not how are we going to do it? And I've heard a recurring theme, I need more information, and I love this, but today I'm not, if we?
Yeah, no.
And it is an FY23 item.
Right. And, and understanding that these are things that are not being implemented today.
Yes, ma'am.
And annually get reviewed. Got it.
What's next? Any, anything before I move on? There's some hot topics I want to talk about before we leave. Next. Asphalt Art Program, Goligichi, USCB, HUD, Landmark Survey, Mitchellville, Mitchellville, Public Art in Parks. It's just intentional. We've done it before, but Jen McEwen and Jen Ray are working on the CIP. And then Implement Asphalt Art Program. Jen, may I call on you to explain what that is? Please, thank you.
Thank you. So the Asphalt Art Project is a program that Community Development and the OCA developed. Marcy Benson and I have submitted a few grants. But ultimately, it is just a mural wrap project on unsightly utility boxes along Cove Avenue, Gumtree, and Marshland and Matthews Road. Not the ones that are covered by bushes and nobody notices, but the ones that are out there and need some repair and some aesthetic pick-me-up. We did receive $10,000 from the Community Foundation of the Low Country for artist Amiri Ferris to do an Artist in Residency program at Hilton Head High School. From that program, the students will be submitting designs that will then be juried by the Arts Council of Hilton Head, and that's how we will select the pieces.
Thank you, Jen. Any questions?
Just an observation. And again, it goes back to protecting our environment and our aesthetics here on the island. I think I mentioned in my last comment that our signage has even gotten to the size and scope and colors that are beginning to give the impression of billboards, if not close to it. We have signage of all sorts and turns on every path and roadway. That is now just, and I don't want to use a word that gives an impression that some of it's not valued or valuable, but littering every, everywhere you look. You can't see past it to see the beauty of the island. And I just, you know, at, at some point, enough is enough, and I don't see this as a valuable project.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion on that?
Just a comment for you close there, Mark. The Arts Council of Hilton Head is not a town council. It's not, it's not approved town council, whatever you want to call it, okay? It's an outside independent organization that does a lot of good work, but it's not a council of the, of the council, okay?
Yes, sir.
With, with acknowledging that, though, on our websites, it gives clear indication that it is, and there are members, our advisors to this department and have an awful lot of control over the department. And I think that bringing, having said that, that might be something, in fact, it's one of the questions that I sent out recently that I want answers to, on how that ad hoc committee is structured, who it reports to, what authority it has. Because as we've, we know from, from recent events, has, is, is causing, will cause issues. And so having said that, back to that strategic plan, I would request, just a follow-up on that, that that cannot come forward without a glossary of terms clearly defined, because as we know, words that are throughout this document and the, and other documents, the Office of Cultural Affairs Strategic Plan, that have meanings that we all assume, we know what they mean, and are not necessarily the meanings that others are using or the activities that are taking place behind the scenes. And so I need that cleaned up. Thank you.
It is not an ad hoc committee of the town, and Mark will look at the website over the next couple of weeks to try to clarify that and clean it up.
Thank you. May I move on?
Yes.
Josh? Sorry, I know you're writing.
Next one, Hilton Head Island Growth Framework.
Okay. Chris's name's on there. Chris is the interim, just accountable to kicking this project off. I will help speed us up through this. I've heard a lot from you as a town council, individually, collectively, on this topic. I have my own thoughts. I love this island. I've always said that we need more than a zoning map to know what we look like and what we we look like and what we are in the future, and that is no disregard for all the hard work that has gone into getting the zoning map right and getting the LMO right. But to bring this current, I will say that I truly believe that great places are planned, not zoned. Right? Just from a high level. Pick your, pick a great place you love, that you've been to, whether it's regionally, in the country, or in the world. Chances are, there's a plan in place. The roads are planned. We have road plan. Pathway sidewalks are planned. But also, the built environment is planned. And our built environment has a lot to do with being reactive to a design review board standard, which is great, great standard. And we're, we're accomplishing, and just for clarity, I think we're accomplishing great projects. But again, it, I think it's, um, there's an opportunity to start tying this together. So, intended results, I think, are planned. Unintended, and hope we get it right through design review and development review. I've heard from you all, I've heard from you that a capacity study, right? What's the capacity of the island? I don't know that we will ever get to a capacity that a level of service of X and Y with 30,000 cars, and if we're ever at 35,000 cars, it's, we're doomed. Because there's so much that has to work. But what, what this suggests is an island capacity baseline assessment. So, what do we have? How many cars are on our road, not just on the gateway, but, you know, end to end? Seapine Circle, Pope Avenue, and everywhere in between? How many hospital beds are there? How many chairs in the school? I could go on and on. I don't, I don't need to go on and on through those. But from a true baseline, in understanding what we have, in comparing it to our policy, and our policy really is a zoning map, I think that we'll know what our real baseline capacity assessment is.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's the first order of business. You've asked me for that. I've been reluctant to just get started on it, because we need the right team in place here. I wanted to get through town council with you. I don't want to do too much and fail, or get Cs on 20 things. I'd, I'd rather get some As on those high priorities. I, I would suggest, and I believe that the staff feels the same way, that island capacity as a baseline assessment is very important. I think once we have that, and we can start working in concert with it, to establish a growth framework. Harbor Town. We love Harbor Town. When we look at the density of Harbor Town, and if we're only looking at density and land use, we'd never allow Harbor Town to be here anymore. Right? I would say that. I think that. That's what our code would say. But so, as we develop a growth framework, I think it's really important that we identify what our centers are and where our edges are. Edges don't grow. And if Marshland Road is an edge, and we define that through policy, through a real growth framework policy, then the, um, the outcome's predictable when you knock on our door to ask us to rezone a piece of property. And I want to provide for our investors in this island, whether if they're here or in the future, predictable outcomes. And so, if we actually defined a growth framework, using the baseline assessment to really start understanding districts, and here's a good example. We already know, for the most part, in our minds, where the districts are and where the districts aren't. Where, where are we going to grow? What needs to have a little more look? Mid-Island's a great example. We jumped out of the gate way before this on Mid-Island, but the district needs to move forward. You need to agree to what that district is. We need to scrub the land management ordinance, but perhaps before we do that, let's put a conceptual master plan in place. Let's take a look at that conceptual master plan. Let's align it with a future land use map, and then let's start applying the zoning changes to that future land use map. And then, of course, as we learn a lot more, align our land management ordinance. I like to say, calibrate our land management ordinance to the intent. And so, that's what this is. This is a massive undertaking. But, but I've tried to punch list this. Thank you to Sean. Thank you to Josh. Thank you to Jen, and everybody else who, who helped think through this. But island capacity, growth framework strategy, sub-area district plans, it, it will really start taking shape. We will have, when we work on this, at this level, a master plan. I'm not saying, I'm not, please don't take this as a parcel-to-parcel master plan, but a master plan outside the gates of our island. That's inclusive of corridor plans. That's inclusive of districts, neighborhoods. I think the one thing, just think for a second, if, if we developed a, a district in the Mid-Island and realized that, as an example, six or eight units per acre is appropriate as a residential neighborhood in that area, the alignment or calibration of the land management ordinance is perhaps, uh, a, a future land use map that shows residential, not multifamily, not commercial, and then, and then amend the subdivision regulations to obtain the subdivision expectations, the, the built environment expectations that you want your code. Right now, setbacks, buffers, height, floor air ratio, pervious, impervious, and some site standards is, is what we have. And it's simply a, a, a different way of looking at a Euclidean, really, zoning map. You're purple, you're yellow, you're blue. I want to make a change. I want to take yellow. I want to make it tan. And if we had a growth framework, we could literally tell the folks that are thinking of rezoning, hey, this isn't going to be as difficult as you think. Or we might be able to say, no, you don't comply with the growth framework map, and 18 or 20 units an acre on a two-lane roadway in Marshland isn't appropriate, and here's why. And so, I, it's all packed into this one. This arguably is a, is our, is our future for a very long time, but when we look at the capacity study, the growth framework, policy map, the district planning, the future land use map, the alignment of the land management ordinance, and then adding the design and performance standards to it, I think that we're going to be in a better place. This is everything you've told me. I didn't make this out. This is everything to my opinion, in my opinion, in assessment of what you're asking. I've heard, we need a, we need a capacity study ASAP. We've chewed off and bit off and are in business in the district planning of the Mid-Island. So, we're leaning this way. It's not to take away from the zoning map. I think it's served Hilton Head Island well. But over time, I think, I think it always needs a refresh, and, and this, we're suggesting this topic to be a real reset of how we do business from this perspective. So, not sure if you all agree. I would love to hear. This needs a workshop, a series of workshops. It's, but to, to kick it off, if, if and when you adopt a strategic plan, if in the strategic plan, the capacity study's a part of it, I'll get to work right away.
From my standpoint, the sooner the better, because this, this really does dictate where we end up.
I don't know how you do anything further until we have this established, right? I mean, and, and the careful establishment of it, because we've done this in 2014, as we might recall, and created some horrible situations, and they are now embedded in residential neighborhoods, and can't do that again.
Yes, ma'am.
This is critical.
Yes, sir.
Mark, there are three data points that I think should go into this discussion, and we have two of the three. The first is an increase of 500 residents over 10 years. The second is the trend in business licenses, as it pertains to the number of underutilized or vacant non-residential buildings. The third, perhaps yet to be determined, would be the trend in 4% properties versus 6% properties. And which way that's going, and what way we think it will continue to go. I think those three data points are going to have to enter into this discussion and, and be a part of it, because to, to fail to recognize the trends that we see occurring right now, I think is a recipe for disaster and moving forward in that.
Understand. Great. Great head start, sir. Thank you. Anything else? Move on? That's great. The other one, the SWOT analysis, a SWOT analysis of the LMO need to coincide together, so know, know that those two are there. Joshua, what's next, sir?
Uh, evaluate access between Hilton Head Island and greater regions.
There it is. I think the comment earlier was 2023. This, this is always important, and it's already started. This topic here with, uh, no, sorry. This topic really drives this, well, that strategy really drives, unintended, um, this strategy. So, anything to add on that compared to what the notes that we have, other than started earlier, it's important, everything's important. There's only so much time. Everything's important. I know that. I'm not, I'm not challenging that. I, I respect that. I feel the same way. I have a high sense of urgency.
I'm inclined to think that this study will be much more vital to us after we've seen the changes in the Carter 278 Gateway.
Just, just a couple of things on that, Mark, is that the Carter 278 Gateway now is all going through Eric Greenway. It is no longer going from the town to the SCDOT. Eric is the person for the county. To correct me when I'm wrong on this couple of things, we'll go through Eric, and Mark is working very closely with Eric, and Mark and Eric will be taking a, a trip next month to the Civ Group to talk to them about our project. Mark, myself, and Tom meet every other month with our counterparts from the county. That's been going very well. Their agenda's a little different than ours, but it was different. And then, you know, the, the city managers and the city mayors meet every other month too, to discuss our relationship, where we are. We, Joe and Pastnak and me have talked about having some council-to-council meetings together, but I have an easier time putting that together than he does, so we'll just leave it at that. But we are working at the best relationships between the county and, and the town. That's Dan Mark.
Yes, sir. We have those notes, and thank you for the comments. Anything else before I move on? We, it's 124-ish and ticking. We'll get through it. I, I don't want to miss an opportunity for some general discussion, and then to talk some new items, as, as recommended. What's next, Josh?
Workforce.
Work with council to develop appropriate policies that will support the growth and expansion of workforce and affordable housing. Beginning in 19, council made it priority, adopted workforce housing strat plan. Following is continued work towards implementing the recommendations. You've since earmarked a million dollars towards a housing project, and, and you've earmarked a million dollars in principle towards a housing project, housing development on Patterson tract as, as, as an example. I, again, all those will come forward as true strategies to you. My, my feedback that I've been hearing is, we need to think way bigger than one tract. We have adopted policy. I think it's served us well. We have a residential, no, a commercial to residential conversion policy, so to speak, in place. We also have a density bonus. We've communicated that to Mr. Lennox's point. I remember, one of my first meetings was a workshop on this topic, and we said, hey, you know, rather than just adopt it and let it collect dust or be in the rearview mirror, what are we doing to promote it? What are we doing to advertise it? We are on LinkedIn. We've sent it to everyone we know. I've sent it to, to people I know in my network through LinkedIn and some shared messages there. I know that we have a press release. It, it's a recurring item as a strategy in our social media, and I don't just mean a Facebook post. I mean real LinkedIn. Companies are watching us on LinkedIn. Companies are paying attention to what we're doing. Investors, employ, employees that want to work here, they all look at LinkedIn to see what we're doing, and, and like we look at other things on LinkedIn. For today, um, for today, I'm sorry, I don't have it up there. Thought I did. What do we want to talk about, and/or is this ready for another workshop?
I think that we need to also be reaching out to the development community, if we're not already. Uh, those are the people that are going to be building these projects, and they need to know what we have here. And as part of that, I for one need to understand more what a public-private partnership might look like, or how we might want a public-private partnership to appear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown?
Sorry.
Very good. Quick note.
Sure. I think, I think you said 2019 is when this was adopted as a, as a goal by town council. And, and we know that our level of service on Hilton Head definitely suffers because of the lack of workforce, affordable housing, whatever you may want to call it, okay? From the service industry and restaurants, childcare, so on, right? And I agree, we have to, we have to keep, uh, keep raising the flag that we're open for business, all right? I'm, I'm really wanting to better understand what we do when the unlikely developer shows up to Hilton Head saying, I want to do 100% affordable housing. Okay? And is it at that point that we have a list of offerings that we're going to give them? And I'm not sure that we have established that. I know that the start of it plan clearly states that we should be attacking this from almost every angle that you can, okay? And I think we have, to a degree, uh, developed a mindset that we're looking for the, the home run on the long ball here, right? Where there's going to be a project that shows up that brings forth 200, 300, 400 units, right? And we're just not, we're not getting there with that, okay? And every, I'm sorry, every day that goes by, our, our situation worsens. So, I think two words come to my mind, being aggressive and being intentional, okay? So, if it's not necessarily waiting for the developer to knock on the door, but the town itself taking a stance, saying, hey, here is a project that we want to do. However many units, here's the cost involved, let's move forward with making it happen, because we then start to instill a level of confidence in our community that we are solving this issue and not waiting for someone else to solve it for us. And back to the attacking from every angle, um, it, it, it may not be that 200 unit. You know, Habitat is going to develop maybe a dozen or so, okay? But every unit that we provide on Hilton Head that is affordable, we are chipping away at that problem. And at least in, in my mind, I think it's severe enough to where the answer shouldn't necessarily be no when someone walks in the door, but absolutely yes when they walk in the door. And I, I just, I, I think that that needs to be a mindset, an offering, that, that we are giving off, that we are doing everything we can to solve this issue. Again, just to, to build some confidence.
Mark, may I?
Of course.
You asked the question, should it be a workshop, and I think yes. The Public Planning Committee has been dealing with this for four or five years, made recommendations. Council has supported them, but we haven't made the first, uh, affordable housing unit other than as part of a market rate project. My suggestion would be that staff prepare, uh, options for the council to consider, uh, arrangements, business arrangements, development arrangements, uh, going from, uh, a private developer dictating everything to, uh, the town, in a sense, sponsoring a, uh, housing development on Hilton Head Town property. Sponsoring would mean not necessarily to be in the development business, but seek through an RFP, developers who but seek through an RFP, developers who would create a housing project on town-sponsored land. We have struggled over the past few years of understanding what kind of commitment the public sector would have to make in order to fill the gap between the cost of a project and the rent roll from an affordable housing. I think that needs to be prepared as well. Sturtevant said that our recommended 2,000 units over 10 years. I've been using that as a goal. We have something like 23,000, 24,000, 25,000 employees on the island. 15,000 or 16,000 of those are commuting to the island every day. 2,000 of 16 is a relatively small number, 12%. I think that's a doable goal. I think we should push in the direction of adopting it in a work program that gets us to a point of implementing a workforce housing program within the year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No, it should be a workshop. That was all.
Okay.
David brought to Mark, myself, this developer out of Seapines that wanted to take a project across the street from USCB, develop it into affordable housing, workforce housing, whatever you want to call it. Mark and me were very much impressed by the whole idea. And the whole idea was that they would build housing for workforce housing and that their client would be the major groups on the island, whether it be the surge or coastal or whatever it was. And it was going really, really well. Then it just stopped. The model was perfect and it just went away. But there are people with creative ideas out there. And we should be soliciting all those creative ideas for great opportunities like that. But that was, we, we haven't let that die yet, but it's.
I, I, I agree that we should entertain all those ideas. The, the problem we sometimes run into is the quality of housing that is being proposed by a developer may not meet the standards we want to have on the island. And then, we as a community have to be willing to subsidize that project to get it to our standard.
Thank you. We'll move on. It is 120, well, 135. All right. What's next, Josh? Oh, who, we, we can't talk about that anymore today, can we? Did someone bring that up? Yeah. No, no one brought that up. Josh wants to talk about it.
I wrote him down.
I know. I'm kidding. We probably did, but for lack of time, I'm teasing you. Yeah, so this came up when we had a request from a neighborhood to put a speed hump in the street. And it's so reactionary once 100 people ask you to put a speed hump in and it's not your road and there's no expectation. And then we're thinking about a speed hump on this street. And that's 100 people that want the speed hump, but truly, we don't know if there's 200 people that haven't called us, that don't want the speed hump. It's really good to have a residential neighborhood traffic calming policy in place so that folks know how to make the request. They don't need to know one of you. Not that I'm shying away from that, of course. But if we had a program in place, they could make an application as a neighborhood. They could collect the signatures. They could make that request. And we could work with them to do some traffic counts, to truly understand what they're asking for, to put this, as, in one example, a speed hump in place. But then we would have the confidence as a staff and, and, and organization that it's, it's planned and it's intentional and it's supported not just by the vocal minority. And there's also a process in place so that you know how to ask for it.
So is this restricted to neighborhoods or is it traffic calming across arterial secondary roads and so on?
Well, I think that as we build our corridor plans in place, we're going to bake in there those traffic calming elements, our crosswalks, our mid-block crosswalks is one example. Sinage, landscaping. Those need to be in a corridor plan as a traffic calming layer of, of the enhancement.
But the reason this is up there is for neighborhood.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I just jump in? Because I thought we had a policy that in all new developments and maybe Chris or can, but in all, I'm not sure where it sits. So I'll, I'll, I'll leave that so that I don't have to search my brain for that information, right? But I thought we had something in place that as development was taking place, that calming, uh, traffic calming aspects were always supposed to be considered as part of that. But having said that, traffic calming should be happening from the time you come onto the island. And, you know, everywhere you go on the island, we should have some aspect of traffic calming. It's, it's only logical and I think absolutely beneficial to every person who, who comes across the bridge. Thanks.
Next. Anything else on that? Next? All right. I, I flagged one. And that is assist with cross-island parkway toll booth removal. Just to give you some update on that. Cross-island toll plaza removal, roadway reconfiguration, and cross-island resurfacing, right? So it's not just removing the toll. And this is as of earlier this month. DOT is procuring this with an anticipated award in December of this year. Expect to be under contract with the winning firm by late January of '22. Expect substantial completion of the project to occur by December of '22. So this is a next year, all-year project. Then, once they move forward with that, we'll talk to them about transferring the administration building. They have some construction activities, the tunnel underneath. They don't even want to talk to us too much about that right now until they get their construction figured out. So we have some decisions to make if, A, if we want the building and B, what we do with that building. So that's important. Another thing here, too, and, and we have a note and I have a note several times. We've got to work with the DOT to make sure those toll lanes come down at the appropriate time of year, not peak season, one week before heritage or on July 4th weekend. So we'll, we'll make sure we're, we're really carefully, and Josh has point on that. Next, and I'll just add this in, William Hilton Parkway resurfacing. Same thing, DOT is, is the theme here. They anticipate publishing a bid in March of 2022 with a goal of being under contract sometime in the middle of summer. Does not want the resurfacing to begin until after Labor Day next year. Estimates, estimate a fall '22 construction repaving schedule. Repaving will occur from Gumtree Road to Indigo Run Drive slash Whooping Crane Way. And again, from Shelter Cove Lane to Yacht Cove Drive. That's it. And so we've got some work to do with the Department of Transportation to request paving outside of those limits of, of paving. So that's what we know at this time. There's not much to chat about. It's just information.
And that's unacceptable. I mean, the potholes and the cars driving up 278. I mean, people are starting to look at us for the damages to their car. I mean, putting it out that far, I mean, we've asked for it almost a year ago, is really unacceptable, Mark. And I'm not blaming you, but it's unacceptable.
Yes, sir. I'm making that note. I will keep working on that. There were a few things, additional items, so I'm going to jump into that. For lack of a better way to do this. Island Resiliency Plan was a topic. What I brought up was a virtual meeting ordinance and thinking about bringing that forward. Solid waste and recycling per the Greater Island Council and, and Planning Commission recommendation. Different than just us working on this with the county. I don't know how to say the word chat. You know how to say that word, Josh? Chad to Chitagua Annual Event, which is a community center? Chitagua, thank you. Which is a destination for an organization and community activities. It's for nonprofits. It's for town events. It's for biodiversity events, more in an auditorium. We talked strategic plan, when we would revisit and get together. You at a council meeting brought up a property maintenance code and Chris Yates gave you some information on that. I captured it to talk about this today. That's a, that's a big business. I wouldn't suggest we add that to our list right now, but that, that did come up. Sandalwood Food Pantry came forward months ago. It was on an agenda. CSPS, so Community Safety Public Services Committee Agenda. That's in limbo, I would say. I just, at some point, I'm going to put that back with you all. That might, that, that might be on at least a proposed agenda in the future. Yes.
Let's put it on the next agenda. It's been out there too long. Either we're going to do it or not going to do it.
Yes. Okay. It's fair. That's what I need. Note a property maintenance code. So this biodiversity and cultural center concept, I think, is important to talk about. The solid waste recycling per the Greater Island Council, and I appreciate their recommendation. And then the Island Resiliency Plan. There's really three things to talk about and it's, again, today's about what you want me to do, not how you want me to do it, so thoughts.
Mark, I'd like to add to that because I haven't heard a lot about it today. The beach management plan, is, is that in here somewhere?
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah. Yes, we just didn't.
Well, the, the, I'm bringing it up now because in order for us to come up with a beach parking plan, we have to have some idea how many people we want to serve. And, and that is dependent on how many parking places we have and how many people we want on the beach at any one time. So I, I guess what I'm advocating is, what, when did you say you were going to have the beach master plan, management master plan done? Okay, you understand my point. I think, I, I applaud you and the staff's emphasis on planning to create the context in which our decisions and policies are being made. So that's just one example of a master plan that will dictate other things coming out of it.
Yeah, we, it's in here. It's, it's one of 68 in here.
You mentioned resiliency plan. This often gets thrown out there at annual meetings. My request is that staff do enough to identify what the threats are to the community, not necessarily try to answer all of those questions. So that, so that we as policymakers can begin to prioritize, if necessary, an implementation plan. My, my sense is that living on a barrier island has some obvious threats. Combine that with everybody's desire to be on a barrier island in a beach complicates those even further. And I don't know what the answers are, and I'm just looking for direction from staff on that. We have, in passing, discussed the Stony Nonprofit Development Corporation. I'd like to expand that conversation at some point. I think it's timely because of the corridor SCDOT funding that we have to have that conversation fairly quickly. But it's important to this community, not only for the Stony neighborhood, but if successful, that concept has an opportunity to solve issues across Ward One. And I think we need to be thinking about substantive solutions that really have the opportunity of solving a cultural issue as well as a island-wide population density growth issue. And I think there is a solution there. Connected to the idea of transferable development rights to navigate or mediate the issue between native island property values and island-wide expectations of the number of people who are going to be living here. So those are three items from my standpoint that need additional emphasis. Thank you.
Can I make one comment on what David said? SCDOT made it very clear to us, they will put no money into their project whatsoever at all. That down as a town project and the town should work with the state on some funding, but they will not fund any part of it whatsoever.
Okay. Just to be, just to be clear, I did use the word SCDOT. I, I was using that improperly. I was saying state funding, suggesting state funding. It's a political contribution that needs to be dealt and decided. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. And I, for, for full disclosure and clarity, I don't know why I jumped over it. Trying to look at the shot clock here. Gullaguchi Historic Cultural District Development Corporation is on my news. As a town council, you and your recommendations from the recent William Hilton Parkway voted five to two to advance the recommendations. Part of those recommendations is to explore development corporation. So we've already started to do some, some background research on that. South Carolina Code allows development corporations to be set up here. They're, they're allowed differently in different states, but we'll soon have some background on that. A little familiar with public development corporations and, and some nonprofit development corporations, so TBD. So, so I'm clear, and I have no issue with this. I think it's a, a good, a good thought, especially as we're looking at beach resiliency, to add to the mix a SWOT analysis, so to speak, of island resiliency. And if that dictates a resiliency plan much sooner than later, if, if there's any gaps, we add that. Okay? So we'll add as a strategy, a SWOT analysis of island resiliency and we'll define that. Okay? So there's one. Two, the TDR ordinance, I'd like to understand that a little more. But we'll, if, without objection, I'm going to add as a strategy to explore a TDR ordinance to achieve the benefit you've mentioned.
Yeah, especially in the context of the development corporation idea because those two things dovetail nicely and have the potential of really creating a balanced solution. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And then, Development Corp. will be a strategy without objection. Okay?
Mark, are we going to be given the opportunity for some concluding comments or suggestions?
Yes, sir.
In this, thank you.
That's why I'm hurrying.
Okay.
I want, I want to hear from you. And then this biodiversity center, Rex Gale made a proposal. It's a fabulous proposal. It's well outlined. Should it be number 72 on the list for us to be working on right now? Or do we put this on the side and let us catch up with our priorities as already defined? Not sure. I thought, I thought you saw it. Okay.
Would you send it to us?
Yeah, we'll send it to you. Sure. Sorry, I thought, I thought you had it. Apologies. All right. Well, that is it for the work. I would like to hear from you moving forward. Again, this is at two. If we go a little over, there's no penalty, but I know that from your own time, it's important and we'll get out of here. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn this back over to you.
Mr. Lennox?
Thank you. This has been a, an enlightening and rewarding experience. And I'm very grateful to the town manager and our wonderful staff for all of the work that has gone into this. This process, as I see it, ties the various departments of the town together much better. In the past, we were accused of having silos of responsibility, but I see cross-pollination occurring here and I think that is very, very helpful. That information is also being shared with the town council, which is vital and important and, and certainly in line. But there's something missing, in my opinion. And that is, this process is not incorporating the input from our boards and commissions. Yesterday, I had a discussion with the chairman of the Planning Commission and he says he feels like he's flying alone. He doesn't know what his marching orders are. So to me, very, and I know there's a meeting set up between the town manager and the mayor and that particular chair. But what I'm saying to you here is that I think we need to draw in those boards and commissions into the strategic plan so that they know what it is that we're trying to do in moving it forward. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Lennox?
I have a very good sense of the amount of work that has gone into a document like this. And, and congratulations to you, Mark, and, and Josh, and you.
this, and, and congratulations to you, Mark, and, and Josh, and the entire staff. It is very apparent to me how dedicated all involved were. I, I see some elements and issues that we as a council have to continue to track. I think the management of this process is massive. However, I think this document and the structure you have created within this document will facilitate that. You have clearly defined the goals, strategies, and tactics, and that is step one in every planning process. You've established accountability, which really hasn't been done before, that I've seen at the town level. I think you are developing and talking about the appropriate measurement of the goals and to what extent each goal is accomplished every year. And I think you've also talked about how best to communicate, not only with council, but with the community, most, most important. This document and the structure inherent in the document, and your commitment to those elements, will make it a success. Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bill.
Thank you. Congratulations to, to you, Mark, and the entire staff. Superb work.
Thank you.
This will be a strategic plan unlike others. Many strategic plans throughout the country, just not here, are done. Everybody takes a deep breath, and it, it's put on the shelf and gathers dust. What you've done here is you've breathed life into it with that first chart here on the left. You, you've linked activity to the plan. You've created accountability. You've created timeframes. You really have brought it to life. You've translated a document that speaks to the future in terms, to a day-to-day operational plan for the staff. That is excellent. I, I think some things in the future, we need to, we have to deal with that, the word subsidy, in terms of workforce housing. I've run the numbers many ways, and there's no way it gets done without some type of subsidy. I don't think we, as a group, have come to grips with that yet, and I think we should. And, and just personally, I have a committee meeting on Monday, Community Service, and we'll be talking about the Islanders' Beach. So I'll be meeting with Jeff after this to get an update on your thoughts on what can be done to make that more accessible, more enjoyable to, to our island residents. So we look forward to that. And for the public that's watching, please, please show up or attend if you can. Thank you.
Curtis, a couple comments. Would you like to say anything?
No, I'm, I'm just taking, taking, taking my notes, and we'll report back to the manager.
You don't wanna tell me how much fun you had, Curtis?
Well, it was a lot of fun, and I, I think that the, the, I mean, just to echo what everyone else has said, certainly a lot of thought went into the presentation. Your, your dashboard over here is a, is a great idea, but you know, again, this is, this is all y'all's work. And, and, and you know, then leaves council with a lot to do. I do think that as you move forward toward the workshops on the several issues that you've discussed having workshops on, I think that the, 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 one thing that all of this shows is how all of these things, or certainly many of them, are interconnected in ways that, you know, don't make it easier to untie the knots, but I, but I think that you, that you have to. And just since, since I was given the chance, I, I will say this. I think that the, the, the issue of workforce and affordable housing, focusing on that as a standalone item is, in my view, to the extent that my view matters to anyone, I think if your, if, if your end result there is, you know, a dormitory for people, you've, you haven't accomplished too much. What I think the conversation might be is one related also to the ongoing sustainability of Hilton Head Island as a place where people will come to make a life, not just come to, you know, work in a restaurant. And if, if, if there's not a focus on developing the overall island as a place where people can come and perhaps start off in a, in, in lower-cost housing, but be able to move on to, to have a, a, I mean, to have a life here, you know? Raise your family, send them to school, you know? Live here. I'm, I'm not sure that, again, just focusing on workforce housing is what, you know, might be described as, as, as a dormitory is, is broad enough. I think that the, the, the interconnectivity of, of all of the things that have been laid out here today is, is, is to me, anyway, the, the, the main takeaway from all of this, and how in order to, to keep the place sustained, not just for the, for the vacationers, who are a tremendously important part of, of the equation, but also for, you know, the, the collective we here, who make this place our home. It needs to be a place where other people can come and make it their home, as opposed to just a place where people can come to labor.
Thank you.
Well, I wanna thank you, Mayor, for that, and thank you, Mark, and staff, for such a great opportunity and presentations, all the hard work that went into this draft. And, and thank you, Curtis, because you echo a lot of the feelings that I have with regard to workforce housing. And, you know, we still haven't really clearly, for me, anyway, made a glossary term of what we mean when we say workforce affordable, but what, what I mean, what's in my head when I think of that, is an opportunity for young families to join us here on the island, to raise their children, and to become an integral part of our community. And so the dormitories, which is aptly put, some of the discussions in the past have revolved around living conditions that would not accommodate, in my mind, growing families or growing sense of belonging and personal growth here. And so, thank you, Curtis, for leading that conversation in that direction. It is important. And, and as, as long as I'm thinking along those lines, there's something that I've been, I've started working on, started before COVID, and have recently picked it up again. But we think about those young families on our island, and we know that we have, not just here on Hilton Head, not just in Beaufort County, not just South Carolina, but across the country, we have issues with regard to the level of education and the classic education that children deserve to have, the opportunities for their growth, not only through their academics, but through their emotional learning as well. And because of that, I think it would make smart, and Mark, this is something that perhaps if with agreement, we could look at putting on our list. I, I think it's time that Hilton Head Island, being the excellent community, expecting high standards, those of us who live here appreciate education, consider how we put together a charter school for the island and for our students, how we give them something better than what they could, are currently getting, something that's within reach of everyone. And so I would encourage us to think about how we do that for ourselves. Not only are we creating all of these things we talked about today, but if we don't educate our children properly in a classical education, in a place where they are, feel safe and able to grow, I think we've done a disservice, and none of the rest of this really matters. So having said that, I, I mentioned the glossary of terms yet again, and, and I find it absolutely essential that before we adopt this or any strategic plan, that we have clear definition of wording. As we know, recently, there was some controversy that came up, and I find the same language interwoven throughout this document. And so, one piece that we didn't touch upon, and, and it's not, it's not too, well, it is. It's, it has a lot of the language that I'm making sure that we all know what we're talking about throughout it, and that's the Develop a Human Resources Strategic Plan. I've got almost red and yellow all over it, because there's language here and ideas and concepts and strategies and tactics, I guess, that I want clarity on. And I want clarity, not because of anything that I can get called a name for, but because of that, in fact, what I think of, what most of us think of, those I've spoken to, and the common definitions of particular words are not necessarily utilized in that way when they're just set forth in a document. And because of that, we know that we've run into some trouble, and I think that it behooves us to be absolutely clear that when we are creating what we know to be true and valuable, a diverse and inclusive community, that we, and strategies for that, that we're not talking about other items, such as critical race theory, or any of those that go along with that. And I'm gonna be on this council and in this town for a very long time, and to every inch of my ability to ensuring that that doesn't happen, I wanna make sure, I will assure you that I will make sure. And for that matter, the glossary becomes very, very important prior to any adoption of any strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mark, thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our opinions, but more importantly, Mark and staff, really.
Yes.
I'm, I'm very pleased and encouraged by the organization, the breadth, the depth of what you've presented. I'm also awed by the number of things that are outlined in this. I'm glad to see some of the dates aren't to twenty-twenty-one, but I see dates that are twenty-twenty-three and wish that they were twenty-twenty-one, so that's the ballgame. The plan references a number of different master plans, and I, a beach master plan, parking master plan, strategic asset management plan, mid-island master plan, Mitchellville master plan, growth framework master plan, and probably others. I am comforted by your commitment and staff's commitment to plan, so that we can make better decisions as they come along. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brown.
Yes. If, if y'all, if y'all didn't know, Mr. Orlando was a high school quarterback. Am I correct?
You weren't supposed to tell anybody, 'cause I hurt my knee.
And quite often, as those astound athletes age, I'm sorry, they, they develop into the really good coaches, right? And I firmly believe that we hired us a good coach, okay? And I wanna thank him for sharing what I would describe as a playbook, okay? And he's got players on his staff to go get the job done, right? And we're sharing it with the community, which could be described as the fans, but at the end of the day, I think we all want wins, right? And, and we've got a coach here that is, is telling us out loud, I'm, I'm ready to win, okay? And as a side note, I'm a Dallas Cowboys fan, and I thank God that Jerry Jones is no longer going down there and trying to call the plays. And I think we need to be mindful of that also, as we ask the coach to go out and get us some wins, right? That we remember where we are as far as policy is concerned, and continue to support him in, in that aspect. So I'd, I'd also wanna take this time, I've, I've talked to Mr. Orlando about it, I've talked to the mayor about it, and it's crucial that we have Mr. Orlando's, you know, evaluation tied to this strategic plan, right? I think I sent everyone a note about that. I, I think that's crucial, that we have that. Not only that we and the public are making sure that Mr. Orlando's doing a great job, but it also reflects that we are supporting him, okay? So that's, in my mind, why it's so critical that we have that as we move forward. So I appreciate what you've done. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the timeline that you have developed with expediting this to November sixteenth. I think closing it before the end of the year is important, so that Mr. Orlando can then start to develop his budget around the, the playbook, right? He needs to know if he's gotta go out and get a good receiver or not, right? So I appreciate the timeline, I appreciate the time we spent here together today. We're in a good place. Feel very comfortable and confident with us moving forward. So thank you again, sir, to you and your staff.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to everybody. Thank you.
Mark, I witnessed you and Josh and the rest of the staff work over the last ninety days of putting this plan together. Texts late at night, and you were still up doing things when I was watching the baseball games.
I can't.
So you get to thank Lisa for the work she's done on your evaluation. If you don't like it, talk to Lisa, okay? The, the council will go over that evaluation starting on November second. Lisa has done a very good job on it. Bill has checked it out to make sure it all works, and the answers are right and everything. So we've come a long way. But your staff and you have done an excellent job. You were an excellent hire. You are my legacy, the fact that you're here, so don't screw it up, okay? But you know, you used all the accolades before to thank your staff for all they did, and they were entitled to all those accolades. But I must say, the council is articulate, bright, brilliant, creative, thoughtful, and as I always tell the staff all the time we talk, they are geniuses in their own right. But working together, we become a really great group. Between yourself, your management team, the staff of the, of the town, and the council go together, we become a very good group, and I'm very appreciative for the members of the council, and appreciative of yourself and your staff, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a great council, great meeting, and have a good day.
Thank you.[1746.61][1746.61]